So this is the Manhattan City Commission. It's 5:30 on Tuesday, July 14th. We are discussing the budget this evening. It is a work session. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vivian, I think you might want to record. I don't see that symbol up there.
I think it is. Okay, so with that, we'll go ahead and kick off our budget meeting this evening. We have 2021 Budget for the Chamber Convention and Visitors Bureau, Transient Guest Tax Fund, and Economic Development Fund update. And our presenters are going to be Jason Smith, CEO, Chamber of Commerce; Karen Hibbert, Director of CBB; Jason Hilders from Department, sorry, Deputy City Manager; and probably Darren Solden, also from Economic Development from the Manhattan Chamber. So whoever is first?
Do you want me to start, Jason?
Sure. Go ahead, Jay.
Okay. Well, I would also add Janet Nichols, who will be presenting on Military Relations as well. So thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to address you tonight regarding our Economic Development and Tourism Programs. In addition to the presenters, we have Larisse Shope, who's our Chair this year for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. We will spend most of the evening discussing our ongoing efforts to increase the economic prosperity of the community, even in what is one of the most trying economic times in our nation's history. We will also present our initial budget request for 2021, understanding that economic conditions could potentially change one or both by the time we get to the end of the year. I first wanted to say how proud I am of our team and their individual and collective responses to the COVID-19 crisis. Everyone on the Chamber team has put helping our local business at the forefront of their priorities. This was led by our outstanding Economic Development Team and included an incredible partnership with the City Commission to create Emergency Loan Fund. The response from the 80-plus businesses receiving assistance has been very positive, and they appreciated the speed at which we were able to get those funds allocated. Thank you for the foresight to create such a program and the confidence in our team to administer the program. Our CBB team also had to pivot and reassess their activities mid-year. This included a nearly 30% budget adjustment based upon funds available from the TGT. However, even with the cuts, the team has continued to be in front of potential visitors and meeting planners at an incredibly impressive rate and position the Manhattan hospitality industry to recover as quickly as possible once travel becomes safe again. As an organization, we had to make some tough decisions this year. This included some furloughs and layoffs, as well as leaving some jobs vacant. We made other significant reductions to be positioned for the potential challenges that lay ahead. From a CBB perspective, we will present a budget request tonight based upon an estimate. However, I'm sure you would agree that trying to predict how the TGT will be affected by future events is impossible. And so we would welcome the opportunity to continue to work with the Commission and city staff to adjust appropriately later in the year in the same manner we did in 2020. As noted in our letter, the Economic Development and Military Relations Budget reflects a reduction in expenditures we have achieved in 2020. We are proposing using these savings in 2021 to offset funds we might have requested otherwise, reducing our requests by $150,000 or 28%. While we are requesting less, we currently plan to have the same budget as 2020 in order to continue implementing the Region Reimagine Greater Manhattan Project Plan for Economic Prosperity. However, it is important to note that we may have to consider other adjustments as we see how COVID impacts our private investment into Advantage Manhattan. We will gladly discuss these with the Commission later in the year as we get a clearer picture of what those might be. These are clearly challenging times. However, we must be prepared to recover and rebuild. I am very excited about the opportunities that present themselves in the near future in both of our tourism and economic development programs. You will hear about these tonight from Janet, Darren, and Karen. We have many opportunities. We must continue to be optimistic about the bright future of our great community. Chamber of Commerce is committed to the economic vitality of Manhattan and are proud of our ongoing partnership with the City Commission. Thank you again for allowing us to be here. I'm going to introduce Janet Nichols, our Military Community Liaison, to kick off our mid-year report.
Thanks, Jason. Darren, I'm waiting on the slides.
On their way. I'll be there in a second.
Hers has the slides.
Oh, okay. It's up a little bit. Thank you. All right. Well, I'm Janet Nichols. I'm the Military Community Liaison for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce, and I'd like to thank the Commission for the opportunity to represent Manhattan as military liaison. This has been an interesting year for Manhattan and Fort Riley, a year of change, adaptation, and learning. Since March, there's been new ways of interacting for all of us, and for me especially, in my dealings with Fort Riley and the First Infantry Division. This new, mostly virtual way of interacting took some getting used to. But as we continue this year, I see that virtual is simply part of the new norm. Having said that, I continue to look for opportunities that connect our great community with our military partners. Now, more than ever, with the uncertainty of the upcoming school year and established relationship with senior leadership of Fort Riley and the First Infantry Division is essential to Manhattan. This year, I have attended several virtual events, from the weekly Fort Riley COVID-19 Town Hall, to meetings with Garrison leadership, to several changes of command and responsibility. In each case, I have established strong working relationships with Fort Riley senior leaders, enabling valuable information sharing that benefits both our community and our military partners. I would like to highlight a few items. One of the virtual events I went to was the retirement of Command Sergeant Major Jose Barajas, who was retired with his family to Manhattan. On a side note, Command Sergeant Major Barajas is a fine example of an outstanding senior enlisted leader with over 30 years in the Army, retiring here in Manhattan, a large and direct benefit to our community, especially as Command Sergeant Major's wife Jennifer is also a retired Army veteran with a military pension. Both are gainfully employed locally and are active volunteers. When I asked Jennifer why they stayed in Manhattan, Jennifer Barajas told me it was the people and our vibrant community. In all their years in the Army, they simply had not experienced anything like the supportive and welcoming community of Manhattan, Kansas. I also attended virtually the Irwin Army Community Hospital Change of Command from Colonel Ted Brown to Colonel Edgar Arroyo. Colonel Brown kindly introduced me to Colonel Arroyo prior to moving to Fort Knox, and I have been in contact with the new IAC commander. In June, Fort Riley began adding a few live interactions and events. Though monthly, Fort Riley Community Town Hall allowed for live briefings beginning this past June. Prior to June, I had been submitting information to be presented by the Garrison. I met with the, excuse me, a meeting at the Garrison with incoming Garrison Commander Colonel William McCannay, set up by Colonel Stephen Schrader. This meeting solidified our role in both promoting community activities and extending our steadfast support to our service members and their families. The Garrison Change of Command will be this Thursday at 10:00 a.m., presented virtually on the Garrison Facebook page. Farewells for Deputy Commanding Officer Spouse Lori Brooks and for retiring Command Sergeant Major Spouse Jennifer Barajas. A welcome for incoming Deputy Commanding General Spouse Kathleen O'Connor. And this Saturday, a farewell for Commanding General Major General and Mrs. Koloszewski. I'm waiting to hear if the Division Change of Command this August will be live. The call will be made this August, the first week. All live and in-person interactions are held to the highest standards recommended by the CDC to include temperature checks, health and travel queries, face masks, and proper social distancing protocols. Fort Riley has been adhering to what they call the three P's: protect the force, prevent the spread, and preserve force readiness. Fort Riley's COVID-19 precautions are a bit more stringent than that of the local community as the Army has a mission that it needs to train for, maintain, and uphold. That being said, Fort Riley is in regular contact with state and local health officials to ensure regional communities are sharing important information with regard to the health and safety of us all. With this in mind, I've been in contact with the Agleeville Business District and others, providing updates as needed when Fort Riley guidance to soldiers and families affect local business. Next slide, please. Oh, thank you. Oh, no, back, please, AUSA. At this time, our local AUSA chapter is awaiting to hear if AUSA Annual Meeting will happen, and if so, what format the annual meeting will take. I realize that the city will likely be unable to attend this year. I wanted to emphasize, however, the importance of our chapter attending this year, if possible. As mentioned this past December, there are a number of former First Infantry Division leaders currently leading our Army, including Vice Chief of Staff General Joseph Martin, Training and Doctrine Commander General Paul Funk, Sergeant Major of the Army Tony Grinstone, and Forces Command Sergeant Major Kurt Cornellison. If our chapter attends this October and the city delegation cannot, we will, as we have in the past, also schedule Hill visits with our federal delegation and coordinate with city officials to ensure we represent the city of Manhattan as if our city delegation were in attendance. This dialogue is an excellent opportunity to reinforce critical interest items for our community with our state's representatives in Washington, D.C. Next slide, please. Up on the top left, that's last year's grand marshals for the Manhattan Veterans Day Parade. We are currently in the early planning stages for the annual Manhattan Veterans Day Parade, the largest Veterans Day Parade in the state of Kansas, and last year, the only Veterans Day Parade in Kansas due to the weather. We will begin coordinating with the city this month in hopes that the Flynn Hills Veterans Coalition can execute as in past years. We are considering multiple plans and contingencies in preparation for our November 11th parade, celebrating the 70th anniversary of the start of the Korean War. The next picture is, no, 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 is Fort Riley Day at K-State, the best K-State football game of the year. It is to be held Saturday, September 19th against Vanderbilt. This, of course, contingent on K-State football. While we are uncertain at this time if there will be a pre-game tailgate as in years past, we can guarantee another great event honoring our soldiers and families serving at Fort Riley. And the bottom picture is an MRC lunch. Despite the challenges COVID-19 has presented, we've held four MRC lunches this year, two live and two virtual. Once we began our virtual MRC lunch, I felt it was imperative to have the leadership of Fort Riley talk about how COVID-19 was affecting the soldiers and families of Fort Riley, what mitigation efforts Fort Riley was and is taking, and how Manhattan could best accommodate Fort Riley personnel while shopping, dining, and living in Manhattan. With this in mind, our May virtual speakers were Fort Riley Garrison Commander Colonel Stephen Schrader and Irwin Army Community Hospital Commander Colonel Ted Brown. Our next MRC lunch is scheduled for Wednesday, August 5th. Our guest speaker is Major General John Koloszewski, Commander of the First Infantry Division in Fort Riley. If we are able, we will hold this event live at the newly renovated Manhattan Conference Center. But we will go virtual if need be. Next slide, please. Thanks. Many events that are typically held for transitioning soldiers are currently on hold or pending. However, I'm currently working with the Chamber's Economic Development and the Fort Riley Soldier for Life Program to establish exactly what and how many soldiers in high-demand jobs, helicopter mechanics, for example, tradition from Fort Riley annually in order to help with recruitment of companies that would hire transitioning soldiers with these skills. Next slide, please. In conclusion, I want to thank you for the opportunity to represent Manhattan. We are requesting $40,000 to support our efforts to remain engaged with our military partners. Please consider that for every dollar the city of Manhattan spends on Manhattan Military Relations, the Chamber leverages and multiplies that investment by three, be it Advantage Manhattan, the Lulapo Brigade, and other recruited sponsorships. Perhaps more than in the past, given our current environment, this investment is absolutely invaluable to the future of Manhattan, be it while soldiers and families are stationed at Fort Riley or if they, like me, retire here. There will always be a Fort Riley. I would like to continue my efforts illustrating what a great place Manhattan is to live, train, deploy from, come home to, and retire. Thank you very much, and I'm open to any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Janet. You always do a fabulous job. Any questions for Janet or comments?
I'll ask a question. This is Commissioner Esther Brooke. And we've kind of touched on it before, and I know it's difficult, given the circumstances with the pandemic. But just speaking to, you know, creative ways to keep some of the enlisted or younger transitioning soldiers, how, what kind of obstacles, and what things should or can the community do to be attracted to them? Because there is a lot of, not just the retirees, but there's a lot of transition in that young 24, 25-year-old type of soldier that's not necessarily picking Manhattan, but how do we make, help them decide to pick Manhattan to stay?
Well, that's always a challenging one. Jobs, jobs is a big one, and that might be more challenging now than usual. Overall, I'd say we're a pretty welcoming community. And a lot of my efforts just today, Operation Home Front had their annual Backpack Brigade, something I participate, I think I've participated in five or six years now. And I went to a few places, the library, Parks and Rec, the Discovery Center, and the zoo, and asked them for flyers for things for the fall. Unfortunately, I didn't have a lot, but the library did give me a flyer. And I put some pens in the bag. Some years I have more things than other. But, you know, engaging that way is one way. For the Army birthday, I had cupcakes, and that was all over Facebook that we gave out for free. I mean, those are small, little things. But I think consistently, I, you know, I try my best. The younger transitioning soldiers are the hardest ones to reach. And it's always a challenge, but I'm always trying new things. I've volunteered with the USO for no-dough dinners, serving food, you know. And that's the kind of the fun thing about this job. I do anything and everything. So, you know, but that's some small things that I do, you know, while they're still in and maybe considering Manhattan and Kansas and the region, you know, on a regular basis.
Thank you. And I'll follow up with one question, kind of a different track. But I do, I know you work very hard, and it is difficult. One thing that has kind of come, seems to be coming to some sort of organization is the governor's kind of effort around some veterans' military connections, and then K-State, and some of that around mental health and some of the services and outreach. Is that something, since we're so close in that early transition to Fort Riley for those soldiers, is that something that we could do or are doing from a service standpoint? Or promoting any kind of handoff, I would say, from Fort Riley to civilian side of things with mental health?
You know, we probably could do more. I feel like with mental health, that's something that can always be a little better, that you always are striving to do better. I'm not really aware of a technical handoff other than, you know, all of the things a soldier typically does to an extent with the VA when they're transitioning out. And I know the VA, I know this year, I have no idea for the NDAA for next year, but this year, the only, the only budget that wasn't cut was the VA budget. And I know I saw last November Secretary Wilkie, VA Secretary, speak. And I know it's a really big priority at that level. I also, my friend Phyllis Fitzgerald is now on a commission, and I'm sure that's definitely something that's going to come up with her. And I see Phyllis a lot. I'm good friends with her. I got one of her First ID masks. So hopefully, maybe that's something we can work on a bit. We're really fortunate here in town that we have one of the few deep TMS facilities in a community our size. And it's a really good placement since we do have a heavy division that's very busy. We're fortunate right now, virtually everyone's here except for one brigade. However, having that here, which is a non-invasive program, and it's not medication, so soldiers can do it while they're on duty. They don't have to take time off. KIDY's Way, where the deep TMS is, schedules around their work schedule. So that is, I think, something that's very attractive. They accept TRICARE, they work with the VA. And that's really something that probably, in the long run, if the word is out, and we do try to do that, I know there's some billboards at least on I-70, something that is a very positive thing for our community in that regard.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to ask the one question I like to ask everybody. What happens if you don't get the $40,000?
Well, I think that's more of a question for Jason than me.
Because I got a couple of emails on that. People wanted me to ask that and say, what happens if you don't get the $40,000? And I think one actually said, why isn't the Chamber just funded themselves? Why do we need to put public money into military relations?
Oh, well, I could answer.
I wasn't prepared to answer it, so.
Oh, I can answer that part of it for sure. So, so as a military-connected community, and this is, I mentioned, I touched on this when I mentioned the Barajas family. Our face to Fort Riley, and I think I'm that face. I mean, I got basically, it's the second time in a row I've been asked by the Garrison Commander to come onto post and meet their replacement. And I had that with the IAC Commander this time as well. Otherwise, I don't know. Let's say you wanted to speak to someone on Fort Riley. Anybody, the person who wrote you that email. Who would they ask? Who would they go to? Do they know? Do they know how to find Fort Riley on the internet even? Once you get to the Fort Riley First Infantry Division website, where would you find who you're looking for? It's not the easiest website to navigate. Basically, with a phone call, you could call me, and I could tell you where to go, who to talk to, and I could probably give you their email. That is one of the things I could do for someone. I've said it before, and I still say it. I think $40,000 for the city of Manhattan for the relationship we have with Fort Riley is a bargain. I attend several events on behalf of the city and the community. I'm well-known. I'm a trusted agent. And I strive to maintain the highest of ethics in my relationship and dealings with them. I work on many other things. I mentioned workforce and transition. There's a Defense Community Infrastructure Program. I worked with some people in the city here where we were getting federal money that would benefit Fort Riley or any installation in a project. The project had to benefit military soldiers and their families. And we came up with two projects. We worked as a region. I worked with the Former Governors Military Council, the Flynn Hills Regional Council, the Flynn Hills MPO. I can't remember the acronym. I also worked with people from Ogden, Junction City, the city of Manhattan, Geary County, and I'm trying to think a couple of other people as well, to narrow down what projects would be best to suit the requirements, the rather stringent requirements and very quick timeline, to send in a proposal for that program. We got it done. We put, we submitted half a mile of road accessing the Junction City High School, and we also submitted safety improvements to Riley Avenue in Ogden. Now, that does benefit Ogden, but they have nine thousand, between 9,000 and 16,000 Manhattanites a day traveling on that road. So it definitely was a benefit to the city of Manhattan. I worked on that for weeks. We'll find out August 16th or 20th, I'm trying to remember what day, if we're going to be invited for a grant proposal for that. Who else, who else would have done that? I'm not sure, you know. So I really do think I have my hands in so many different things with relation to Fort Riley and also with regard to the National Guard Unit here, the 130th Field Artillery. I also am in communication with counterparts in my position in military communities across the state through the Kansas Military Alliance that I created a few years back. So, I mean, I could talk more if you want. Now, Jason could talk better about what would happen if that money is canceled. But those are the things that I do that I don't know if there's anybody who would fill that gap without someone in my position.
Yeah, so Commissioner Butler, thanks for the question. I don't know the history of why that started. Ron can probably answer that better. I do know that Fort Riley has a $1.7 billion economic impact on the region. And so developing someone that has relationships with our number-one employer and our largest, the group that has the largest economic impact on this community is probably good business. We have a budget that is, as Janet mentioned, about $150,000. But a sizable amount of that is to pay for her is through the city contribution. I don't know that we would be able to maintain the program if, with a full-time person, if we didn't get the funding. Obviously, we'd consider it and look at it if it were part of a budget cut. But it would be difficult to imagine you'd be able, certainly, you wouldn't be able to have the same kind of program. But I don't know that we would have a full-time person that would be able to develop the relationships that we have now.
Commissioner Morse here. I would just like to compliment Janet Nichols on her, the work that she does for the Chamber. She brings people in this community together at the Military Relations Council for the Veterans Parade. She has her finger on the pulse of just about everything military that's happening in this community and Junction City. They have a coordinator, comparable coordinator in Junction City to Janet. But it's important that somebody in our community have ready answers for all of us. And I know I can depend on Janet to know those answers, and it doesn't take me a half hour to, an hour to find things out. So I appreciate the work she does.
Yeah, no, I agree. I think, Janet, you do an outstanding job, and I don't think we've increased it from 40 for a while. So, but I do know you work 24/7 on all of the projects you do, and building relationships is key to this. And you are that one extension we have from Fort Riley to the Manhattan region. So we really appreciate everything you do. And there's so much you do that we don't even know about. So I, you know, even welcoming soldiers on, we never see all of these things that you go to. One of the things I will say I truly do miss because of COVID is the ceremonies. That's one way we would build relationship. And I really do miss seeing our generals and our soldiers just even for an hour every now and then. So without that link, you are that piece that holds us together and binds us together. So thank you for all you're doing, and great presentation. And I know you are constantly working on the betterment for our community in Fort Riley. Thanks for all you do. Okay, I think the, is the next one, the Chamber of Commerce? I don't know who's presenting that piece.
I'm going to jump in next, and we're going to talk about Economic Development, so.
And you are Darren Solden.
I am. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Darren Solden, Director of Economic Development at the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. First off, want to say thank you to Janet for presenting on Military Relations, part of what we do. We do consider it an integral part of our economic development mission, as Jason alluded to, being our region's major employer. And the colossal economic impact that Fort Riley has on our region and our state as a whole is something that Janet does an incredible job with. Also want to compliment Janet on her efforts during the COVID-19 response that we've done through the Chamber, as well as the rest of our economic development staff and really the whole Chamber staff. And I'll talk some more about that later. But have been more than willing to go above and beyond their regular Chamber duties to take on outreach and response to the situation in a number of ways. So really appreciate that from Janet and all of her contributions to our team. So I'm going to give you a report here and then the budget request and really go about this in four parts. First off, going to address the new funding from the city that was approved in December of 2019 and the associated programming that was related to that. Then going to talk some about the existing efforts that were going on prior to that. and funded through the city to include our, our business attraction efforts. Then gonna take a look at the remaining activities that we have either ongoing right now through economic development or coming up for the remainder of the year. And then finally gonna, gonna close that with the, the budget request and happy to answer any questions once we get to that point. So I want to say thank you for allowing us to be here this evening and, and present to you. And, and with that, we will, we will dive in. So first off, as I mentioned, we appreciate the commission's support last December when Jason came and presented on these three focus areas for economic prosperity that came out of the Greater Manhattan Project and ultimately regionally imagined for economic diversification, talent sustainability and entrepreneurial dynamism. With that, those additional funds and, and leveraging the private funding that we get through our Advanced Manhattan program, we've been able to make significant progress over the course of the last six months into, into those areas. So we'll move into those areas of focus. First up, under economic diversification, I came on board as Director of Economic Development the second week of March. It was an interesting time to come into this job. I can tell you I was in the office for about a week and a half and then the world changed. And so I'm gonna talk quite a bit about reporting on, on some of the different programs and components of our economic development mission. But we're also gonna talk some about our response and how we had to change some things as, as a response to COVID. But from an economic diversification standpoint, that was one of the, one of the key items was to bring on that position again and came on in, in March. We've also commissioned some economic research. So there's two key areas here. One, the biosecurity marketing campaign, I'll talk some more about in a bit. But we are specifically targeting those involved in biosecurity and animal health industries, folks that have companies, folks that do research and also students. The timing is right for that with some of the assets that we have in this community and this region. And as COVID-19 is, is at the top of the news every day, we have the ability to leverage some of that. We've also invested in a new data resource. That is part of our new Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership website called Headlight. There's a significant amount of data and I'll show some examples of that a little bit later on. Conduct industrial park planning. So we've recently entered into an agreement with Olson to review two tracts of land for future industrial park sites. Both of those, and we can jump to the next slide, both of those located out in the general vicinity of, of the Manhattan Regional Airport. One of them with rail access. But as we look to the future and, and, and understand the opportunities that we have and the needs that we have for industrial development and for larger scale development, this is, this is a first step in identifying potential tracts of land that could fit that and understanding what it would take to get to the point where, where those will be workable. So on to the next slide, we've got talent sustainability. So there are a couple of things here that were pretty significantly impacted by COVID. One was we were in the process of hiring a workforce development officer. That has been delayed. That's something that we still anticipate doing this year. But for the time being, that was one of the positions that Jason alluded to that was put on hold when this started. Then a lot of the conducting of workforce, workforce development issues requires some in-person. And so we have, obviously that person that was in that position would have been doing a lot of those things. There's also a lot of those activities that have either been pushed back from a calendar standpoint or being done online. We are still engaging through our young professional effort hype. We are still engaging with our partners at K-State, with the, the Career Center there. In fact, we've got a employer advisory group meeting just this week with them. So we're still engaging where we can. But again, some of those efforts have been put on hold because of the current situation and the, the circumstances around it. A really exciting effort that we're taking on is the rebranding for the Return to the Flint Hills Campaign. So this falls under our talent recruitment retention efforts. We've engaged with a local marketing firm to conduct surveys. These surveys have been with human resource professionals as well as folks who have moved to Manhattan within the last three years to better understand the information that they, that they utilize in that move, that process, and also better understand for our human resource professionals, what sort of information resources are necessary to help them do their job and help them attract talent to the community. So that survey process is being wrapped up. Initial findings of that and recommendations are currently being communicated. And we look forward to kicking off that rebranded Return to the Flint Hills Campaign here in the relatively near future. I'll talk some more about that later. But that's gonna be really looking at talent all the way from engaging with, with folks in, at K-State right out of college, all the way to retirees. So not only attracting, attracting talent and folks to fill jobs in Manhattan, but also folks that will be here with roots and, and spending money. So really excited to see where that program goes. Another one that we're very close to making some official announcements on, I believe you got some, an online submission from this group today as relates to this evening's work session. But we put out an RFP in April, went through the process. We got two proposals back, had a proposal review committee who made a recommendation, went through the process and are currently finalizing an agreement for services with, with that entity to provide entrepreneurial ecosystem development. This is another one. We've got, we've got multiple different people in the community doing parts of this. We are excited to hand this to and work with a group that will ultimately be entrepreneurs helping entrepreneurs. And I think that that's the, has been proven many times to be a very efficient way to go about providing these services in our community. And it's something that's near and dear to my heart, having spent a, a number of years with the Small Business Development Center to further develop our, our entrepreneurial ecosystem, create opportunities for entrepreneurs from a wide range of backgrounds, educational situations, different business models, different industries. But Manhattan needs to, needs to be a place where those folks can grow and prosper, but then a place they can stay here. It's a very competitive market out there. And there's always folks interested in, in, interested in taking our success stories and making them success stories someplace else. So we've got to be well positioned into the future. So that covers the, those three key areas of focus that Jason presented last December and, and were associated with the new funding dollars from the city at that point. Right now, I'm gonna go back to a document that you saw in December from Jason and that was the Avalanche Consulting Report, the Target Industry Marketing Report. And there were, if we jump to the next slide, there were four key components that came out of this. Aligning our economic development partners, develop a distinct brand identity, showcase quality of life assets and create a marketing toolkit. And so we have made progress on all four of these. And I'm going to, going to report on, on each one of those here in a little bit of detail. So starting off with aligning partners, we currently have, and we can jump to the next slide. Got a little bit more information on it. We have very strong working relationships with two key partnerships. And those are the Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership. That's a partnership between the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce and the Potawatomi County Economic Development Corporation. And we're gonna take a look at all of the toolkit development that we did from an economic development standpoint was done under the umbrella of GMEP. So we'll take a look at that here in a moment. But the other partnership that we have that's incredibly important is knowledge-based economic development. So this is KBED. These are our partners at Kansas State University, K-State Innovation Partners, as well as the foundation and some of our regional economic development partners as well. This partnership, I think, we, we need to make note of specifically that anytime Janet alluded to Fort Riley and the, and the engagement with Fort Riley and how important those relationships are. It operates very much the same at Kansas State University. When we're dealing with economic development prospect or we're taking a look at something, whether it's coming out of K-State or it's somebody or a company or a researcher someplace else looking at opportunities to work with K-State, having that partnership through KBED and working with Kit Glasscock and his team, working with the folks at the Research Foundation, working with the team at the K-State Foundation. Those folks bring a lot to the table for our community and are doing a lot of marketing for our community, have real estate interests in our community that are relevant to economic development. And we're really able to streamline that process and respond to specific projects, specific proposals and requests for information as they come in because of that partnership. Another piece that's gonna be new that you'll see some more of come our report later in the year is that we have committed amongst our economic development partners for the purpose of city reporting, to do that in a more unified manner in, in the future. So we're working with, with folks from city staff. We're working with our economic development partners to better understand how we can come to the table, to the commission and, and report in a more unified manner as opposed to, as opposed to creating, sometimes it can be a little bit murky when it comes to who's doing what projects, who played what roles. And so that's something that I'm excited about. It's gonna take some work to get there. But I do believe that that's gonna be well worth it when we, when we're able to achieve that and look forward to presenting in that manner come the end of this year. From a brand identity standpoint, you'll see in some detail coming up that GMEP is the brand that we are, the outward facing brand that we are communicating with to, to prospects, to site selectors, to companies as, as we're, we're promoting and selling Manhattan and the Greater Manhattan region. And, and ultimately the GMEP website is the primary economic development site for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. So that is where, and this is a new site, it's got some, some great capabilities. That is where, again, that's the, the outward looking place. That's where we're driving traffic to. That's where the data resides. That's where the buildings and sites reside. That's where the community information resides. And, and that is the outward facing online marketing tool for the Manhattan Area Chamber of Commerce. Showcasing quality of life assets. This is something we hear again and again, whether it's from consultants or, or folks locally or, or companies we work with. We have some incredible assets here in the Manhattan area. And so the Return to the Flint Hills Campaign that I alluded to is obviously playing on leveraging those as we're trying to attract talent and attract retirees to this area. Our quality of life assets will be at the, at the forefront of that effort. Also a Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership digital marketing brochure is a new website. You'll see some graphic examples of that in a moment. Do an incredible job of showcasing what a special place this is, what a great place it is to raise a family, what a great place it is to, to further your career and what a great place it is to recreate. I speak from personal, personal experience, having returned to this area a couple of times over from a professional standpoint, that, that's a great asset we have and we're, we're putting that right out there at the forefront. And one of the ways that we're doing that is through integration of CDB resources into what we're doing. So obviously our Convention Visitors Bureau plays a key role in our local economy when it comes to attracting visitors, when it comes to filling hotels and getting people in restaurants and bringing groups to Manhattan and exposing people to Manhattan, whether they be residents from around the region or the state or whether they be business owners. Oftentimes the efforts that they're doing are the, are the first blush that someone has of our, of our community and our region. And so we're utilizing some of their resources. They've got some great videos. They've got some, some incredible online resources that we're utilizing in our project proposals and in the information that we're putting out because it's, it's great existing information that there's no reason for us to go out and recreate. And finally, something that has been a, a long time in the making, but really excited to show you all of this is our, our economic development marketing toolkit. So this includes, and we'll take a look at, at examples of these, but this includes our Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership digital marketing brochures. We've got some industry-specific information on each of those plus some community-based information that, that gets used across the board. As I alluded to, we have a new GMEP website, which includes a, a really strong data tool as well as a, a real estate tool, both for our use internally, but also to be used by folks that are, are getting to that website from outside our community and outside the chamber's economic development efforts. And then we have also started a biosecurity campaign because, as I, as I said, because of COVID and because of timing and because of some of the assets that we have in this community. The time is right. It fit into our economic development strategy through GMEP and, and some of the, some of the things that came out of the Greater Manhattan Project and regionally imagined already. And we're pushing it to the forefront because of the timing of the current pandemic and, and the ability to, and some of the attention that we've gotten around the country because of that. So, and finally, as a practitioner, this is, this is one that I really appreciate. We have proposal and presentation templates that we can use. So we can very quickly turn proposals, can turn requests for information. It is great to have a toolkit handy for our economic development staff to be able to dive into and present this community in the most professional manner that we possibly can. So we'll take some, a look at some examples of that as well. So we can skip on to the following slide and take a look at the, these are some of the marketing materials. You're gonna see examples here of the covers of, of both our biosecurity, food safety as well as our crop science, grain milling, or, or crop science, grain science and milling. And finally, our animal health and science digital brochures. The following slide highlights some of the content pages, both those that are relevant to the community. And then also an example of one of the pages that's specific to a particular industry. So we've got examples of our leading employers in that industry here. We've got a, a testimonial from the CEO of a company that's already located in Manhattan that's in that industry speaking to why Manhattan's such a, such an important place to be and really be at the tip of the spear. We've got additional data there and content that, that really is specifically focused to decision makers within that industry and, and decision makers at companies in that industry as they look at Manhattan. More general materials about, about the, about the community here as well related to transportation. We can go on to the following examples. Again, we've got data in here presented, not in, not in tables or otherwise, but in some very graphically appropriate ways. So we've got data, we've got examples of quality of life, accolades of the community and, and a lot of testimonials, really relying on testimonials. And the same is true on our Greater Manhattan Economic Partnership website, which is the, which is this slide. Testimonials, video content, those are the kind of things that connect with folks. And so when we were taking the time to dive into this and through GMEP and create a new website, knowing that it's a key part of our marketing efforts, it was really important to create content that grabs people's attention, but really speaks peer to peer, right? We, we need folks that are in, in biosecurity companies hearing from those that are already here doing business in that field as to why they're here. And so we, we were able to, to do that in this, in this new website and throughout our marketing materials. Here you can see examples, some really strong data components on the left side there as well as our real estate tool on the right side. Again, these are incredibly important tools that we have, both as staff, working on proposals and engaging with, with potential companies, engaging with clients. It's also great because folks that are on the outside looking at us can go in and do some of their homework, right? So they're, they're better prepared to engage with us. They're not just finding contact information on the, on the internet. They're actually getting high level information right off of our website. So finally, some examples of some, of some actual proposals that have gone out just in the last, in the last month. And again, but not let, can't necessarily read the detail, but I can promise you that, that that is high quality information there presented in a, in a graphically attractive way. There are live links in those documents. There's links to data in those documents. It's, it's the kind of information that when we get a request for information or are putting together a proposal, that we're now locked and loaded and ready to respond to that quickly, incredibly professionally and with high quality data. And that's, and that's very exciting on our end. Couple of project updates, speaking of proposals. And I can go into a lot of detail because, because the details on these are, are confidential at this point. But I just want to showcase a, a few of the projects we're working on. You can see it's a pretty broad spectrum of types of businesses. Everything from bioscience, animal health. We were working on, on a, some new property owners in the community that we hope to, to bring to you in the near future. That co-packing company and, and in communication with, with Fortune 500 IT company that's looking to, looking to potentially locate a facility here. So you can see there's a, there's a broad spectrum of folks that we're working with. And I think all of the tools I just showed you and the way we're able to present the community and, and do it in a, in a, in a very data-driven and, and a way that is, is directed to decision makers at these companies is gonna serve us well in the future. I alluded to before, and we can jump to the next slide, that, that COVID response. I've talked about all these things we've accomplished, right? These things with, these, the things we're making progress on, going back to, going back to a, a number of, whether it's a consultant report last year from Avalanche or what was presented to you in, in, in December and then March happened, right? And so like everybody, we've, we've had to pivot a bit there. And so there's a couple of key things I want to highlight that are very specific to our COVID-19 response efforts that the economic development team has been involved in. First off, and this is something that was, we came to you back at the end of March and discussed and, and has been incredibly impactful and that's our Manhattan Business Emergency Loan Program. These are the funds from the Economic Development Fund that were approved by the commission. The chamber administered the program. It was meant to be a bridge funding, $5,000 and less typically to help a, a business get through a, a period of time there to where they could access some of the federal or state resources or programs that were available, including economic injury disaster loans from the SBA. The Paycheck Protection Program or PPP that was approved as part of the CARES Act. And, and as of the end of June, when, when that program came to an end in that form, we received 97 applications. As of June 30th, had dispersed 80 loans totaling nearly $360,000. There are still a, a number of loans, three to be exact, that are in process, applications that are in process. There were also some, a couple that were approved and, and ultimately the business chose not to, not to take the funds. And we also had a few that were, chose throughout the process not to, not after the application, not to go forward with, with final submission to the review committee. not to go forward with, with final submission to the review committee. And then there were a couple that were not eligible for a number of reasons where that was business entity type or location. So that program's been incredibly impactful. We've also done a significant amount of outreach, the whole economic development team joined with the entirety of our chamber staff to assist with phone calls and emails to local businesses and chamber members. As you can see, a huge number of those were done, twice in fact. So there was initial round and then follow up at a time later because things were changing so quickly and obviously support at the state and federal and even the local level was changing. And so engaging with those folks throughout that process, answering questions. George Cant in our office, our Business Retention and Expansion Manager, also took on a survey effort of primary and major employers and working with Jack Holston at Potawatomi County Economic Development. That effort covered both Manhattan and Riley County as well as Potawatomi County to better understand the impacts of COVID and at that time and the shutdown that was going on at that time. And so that information then was, was shared with decision makers and the boards of directors at, at both of our organizations. Some of that was published publicly as well. And so there was some value in going through that effort. And then it also was a great way to reach out to those folks to establish some relationship, which, which is paying some dividends, I'll come to that in a bit about our Business Retention and Expansion efforts. So provided technical assistance throughout both the, the period dealing with economic injury disaster loans and PPP as well as throughout business reopening, we're able to work with the county health department and help businesses answer questions and get them pointed towards information resources related to the health orders and, and reopening as well. I'm going to take a little bit of a look here at some data. This is always part of our presentation and, and so I want to make sure because obviously we've entered some somewhat uncharted waters, I want to, want to cover a couple of key points from this data. This first one on employment statistics, as you can see, Manhattan clocks in there year over year down almost 11%. If you look across from, from 2019, from May to May, if you look across at the other university communities in there, you can see we're pretty much in line. So, you know, we've got Ames, Iowa, Stillwater, Oklahoma. We're, we're pretty close in line there, there's some other things at play, obviously, when you get into some of the university communities like Lincoln that are much larger communities than, than an Ames, a Stillwater or Manhattan. But we're in line with, with where those numbers are in other university communities. From an unemployment statistics standpoint, again, you know, we're, let's be honest, we're looking at a pretty short timeframe after this, we're only, we're only a couple of months in. And, and so in, in line with what we're seeing in other communities, we hope to continue to see things trend more in the right direction. We do feel that the graph on the previous page and this one as well probably point to the fact that we have a lot of folks in our, in our local workforce, particularly those that are college students that may well have gone home when, after, after classes closed or after their, their place of employment was closed down. And so that has an impact on this as well. And finally, some numbers that, that you are, all are very familiar with. From a sales tax distribution standpoint, you know, this is something that we keep a very close eye on. See, we've got a little bit of lag in this, but we start to see those first few months of, of COVID impact there in, in May and June. I just want you all to know that this is something that we share with our Economic Development Committee, we share with chamber leadership, we, we share and talk about with our community partners. And, and again, as I, as I alluded to in some of our marketing efforts, our, our efforts and decision making are very much driven by, by numbers and driven by data. And so we're keeping a close eye on, on these as we, as we move forward. The next couple of slides deal with the, an update on, on our real estate components that we, that we manage or are engaged with through the city of Manhattan. First off, the KEC building, we do have one spot. It is, as you're looking at this floor plan, it is the one all the way over on the west side or the left side that is in gray. That Advanta Seed was in there, they moved out in May. That was a planned move, they've been developing some space elsewhere that is, that is on, at the same location as where they're doing a lot of their testing. And so that was, was not a surprise, but they are, they are now out of that space. We have shown that space and we are currently communicating with, with a couple of different folks about it, but I think we've got a pretty decent lead on a potential expansion into that space as well. So excited to see that, see someone get into that space, hopefully here in the relatively near future. Next up, Manhattan Business Park, we've seen several different changes of hands in property out there. One is Lot 10 up there, just underneath the Kansas Gas Service icon where it says ICAN RE. That was a company that exercised the option on that here just in the past couple of months. We have been in contact with them about future plans and will continue to, to engage there as, as appropriate. Also, the former Tallgrass Brewing Company building there where it says Clayton Co-Packing is the new owner there and have been engaged with them pretty significantly about their future plans. And again, look forward to being able to bring some additional information to the commission in the, in the relatively near future about, about the plans there. So do want to say that there are very few, very few proposals that we put together, very few times that people reach out to us about real estate that a, a potential solution in the, in the Manhattan Business Park is not brought to their attention. So it's a very regular component of our, of our presentation of real estate options to potential companies and, and something that we're getting out there as often as we possibly can because we feel like there's, there's really some good opportunity there. And, and it's something that we are committed to continuing to promote and market into the future. So those are things that have gone on thus far this year. We also have a number of things that are in process or coming up for the remainder of the year. You can see here on this slide, run through each one of those in a little bit of detail on, on the following slides. First up, the Business Retention and Expansion Program. George Cant, as I mentioned, is, who is leading this program. Very much an action oriented and community based approach. George has been incredibly active, reaching out, it's on the next slide, we'll talk a little bit about the, the details of that program. But he has been incredibly diligent when it comes to reaching out, both through our outreach during COVID. And now as we, in the last month, have officially kicked off our Business Retention and Expansion Program. That program, you can see program goals there. And if we can go to the next slide, I'll talk a little bit about the technical aspects and the logistics of that. We are committed to visiting with our top 50 major and primary employers over the remainder of the year. Those employers are being surveyed, so there's an interview. There's also a, a uniformed survey that's presented to each of them. We're using a, we are using a, a synchronous CRM system to do that, which is a widely accepted Business Retention and Expansion software that to, to go ahead and put that together, compile results. And ultimately, to follow up on all of that, we will be releasing a local business conditions report in the first quarter of 2021. And so this is something that we feel is going to be very valuable from a economic development decision making standpoint. It's going to be, I think, very enlightening for our community leaders, business leaders and elected officials. And so very excited about where this program is going. Like I said, George has, has taken this on and is, is really moving quickly on it. Just started in June doing visits in person and, and via Zoom as well. And, and by the end of this week, we'll have completed nearly 20 visits. So well on our way to, to get in this program, not only up and off the ground, but going. And, and at the end of the day, these are folks we need to be in front of. These are people that if there are issues, we need to know those issues before they become an issue. And if there's opportunity, we need to be in a position to, to help them take advantage of that opportunity in the most efficient and effective way possible. And so we're going to accomplish that through this program. The next slide talks a little bit about the biosecurity marketing campaign that I've alluded to. You can see this article that was published in The Hill back in April. The headline reading, "Future Pandemic Battles Depend on Manhattan, Kansas", and went into talking about the work that's going to be done at NBAF, talked about zoonotic diseases, the, the ability of those to go from animal to human and, and where are our efforts, both with NBAF and researchers at the BRI and at Kansas State University, the role that they play in that and the importance then ultimately of the federal government funding NBAF going forward. And so we really feel that Manhattan and this region is, is well positioned to, to be at the center of that effort going forward. But we need to build some awareness, we need to leverage this opportunity. As difficult as this situation is, we are presented with great opportunity. And we need to leverage that opportunity to build both local, national, international awareness of our strengths in, in biosecurity research. And so as I said earlier, this, this then runs the gamut. This means that we need entrepreneurs to be aware of what's going on here and opportunities for them to come here and engage with research. We need industry and business to be aware of it for the same reasons. We need researchers to be looking at this as a place ultimately where they can land. I think it, it speaks incredibly highly to the, the level of work that's going on here when you, when you look at our Director of NBAF and the quality of the program that he was running in Canada prior to coming here. Incredibly qualified, incredibly specialized and, and capable folks. We need those kind of folks and more of those kind of folks here in Manhattan, Kansas. And so that's going to be a key part of this. And then ultimately, all of those folks began as students. And so if you're a high schooler or a middle schooler sitting out there and you're reading the news and you want to be part of, of what is, of the next step in preventing future pandemics, we want you to think that Manhattan, Kansas and Kansas State University is a place that you want to be. And so those are ultimately what we're accomplishing with this. We've, if you go to the next page, you can see some examples of a new GMEP Facebook page. We've got numerous social media accounts that are new for GMEP. And again, I alluded to some of the content earlier, a lot of video content, a lot of testimonials, the folks that are here already doing this work and also leveraging a lot of existing content. NBAF is creating content, Kansas State is creating content through a number of different places, whether it's BRI or Innovation Partners. Just this week, I know I made note of this just this week, you know, the press release announcing preclinical research and option agreement with a biopharmaceutical company when it comes to COVID-19 vaccine development and a candidate for that. So that kind of, that kind of press is, is absolutely priceless right now for our community. And so we're going to be pushing that out and pushing out targeted, okay? This isn't, this isn't scattershot, there's a very targeted social media and, and ultimately media placement that we're going for with this program. And, and that takes an investment, but, but that investment's being made so that this is targeted to the right people who are interested in hearing this message. We talked already and looked at some examples of the toolkit. We will continue to sharpen those tools. So we're going to continue to put in industry specific information. We're going to continue to put data about our community. We're going to continue to find additional testimonials from people here already in the community that can, that we can include there and continue to build on those tools so we're as effective as we can be. And then as we said already, our entrepreneurial ecosystem development, working with, with Spark Manhattan, we're, we're incredibly excited about being able to make that full announcement here in the very near future. And, and the first steps of that, I think, while already beginning, I think because of the investment, both of the economic development dollars in that effort as well as some key private contributions that have been secured for that effort, there's an incredible amount of opportunity there to create, create a place where entrepreneurs can network, where they can grow, where they have the tools necessary to build, build their success. But like I said earlier, it's got to be a place where they can grow and stay in the future because that today's, today's entrepreneur truly does become tomorrow's employer. And so as they grow, we want that growth to be happening right here in Manhattan. The Talent Retention and Attraction Coordinator, this is the position that I said has been put on hold for the time being, but we anticipate moving forward with bringing this position on in, in the relatively near future. They will be out engaging through job fairs, talent recruitment efforts, working with companies in the region, working with our young professional effort through Hype, working to, to identify challenges and opportunities with our employers and bring our marketing efforts and bring our, our efforts at the chamber in alignment with, with what our, our employers in the, in the community need. And so, you know, a big piece of that is obviously growing social opportunities for young professionals and students. We talk all the time about keeping those folks here as opposed to sending them off to a major metro area within the central part of the United States or, or simply losing them out of, out of the state altogether, out of the region and the state altogether. So we're very committed to having this person play a key role in, in, in creating these opportunities to engage with these folks when they're at K-State or when they're in a, a job right out of K-State or an internship in the community and, and finding ways to keep them here in the future. And then return to the Flint Hills, so I talked some about this already, but the initial, initial survey's been completed, results are, are, are being communicated right now and plan put together. And the ultimate goal really is all demographics. So this is engaging, engaging talent, again, to keep them here. But it's also retirees and it's also mid-level managers. And it's, it's a number of things that, across the board, where, where we're going to play an active role in providing a platform and tools that help, help our human resource professionals and help the companies here so that as jobs are being created, because that ultimately is our goal. It's, it's job creation efforts. As jobs are created, that we're able to bring that talent to our community. And so as Jason tends to say, oftentimes, that's, that's not an either or proposition, it's a yes and. It's a, we'll create jobs and, and we will, we will play a role in bringing that talent to the community. So we made our 2021 budget request, this is the last component of my presentation. We made our 2021 budget request with a number of key considerations in mind. And I wanted to, to share those with you before we dive into the numbers. First off, understanding the financial pressures caused all around at the city level from a tax revenue standpoint, there's, there's financial pressures caused to our business community. And as Jason alluded to, there's financial pressures caused to our organization that have had some consequences as a result of this situation. The timing of some of our 2020 Chamber Economic Development expenditures. You know, we, we've talked some about when, when new hires came on, myself included, a position that has been put on hold for a period of time that we still anticipate hiring. The Contract for Entrepreneurial Development, Entrepreneurial Ecosystem Development, which is, which is taking or going into, into effect here mid-year. And so the timing on some of these has created a situation where we may be able to roll some dollars into 2021 that were initially budgeted in 2020. We're very willing to be part of the solution moving forward. I think that that's something you'll hear across the board tonight, whether it be from the economic development side or the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Our goal is to be part of this, that solution moving forward. But with that in mind, and, and with a, with a slightly decreased ask this evening, I want you to know that we will continue to maintain our, our core activities of job creation in 2021. We'll focus very specifically on those and plan on maintaining very high expectations from all of our, our partners, our staff and all of our efforts going forward. So there is, there is no, no decrease in anticipation of what results will be despite the, despite the, the current situation. So the following slide has the, has the budget request by line item. I can go into a little bit more detail here, I know there's been some questions about which ones of these items are a part of the, part of the previous $183,000 that included the military relations component that had, was the existing amount from the city previously versus which parts are part of the $350,000 that was approved new for 2020 last December. So if, if there's some questions about that, we're happy to, happy to provide a little bit more. But the Entrepreneurial Services Contract at $100,000 annually. I mentioned the Talent Attraction and Retention Coordinator. That position budgeted $40,000 from the city for. We have Economic Development, this includes the Economic Development Director position as well as the previous amount that had been budgeted by the city in the prior funding agreement to go towards staff for Economic Development. The workforce efforts related to the Talent Attraction Retention Coordinator as well as, as other efforts that the chamber makes to include job fairs, marketing and other outreach. A portion of the, of the membership for the Knowledge Based Economic Development Partnership. Again, that's the one where we're working very closely with both our regional economic development partners, but specifically with the various different partners at K-State that play a role in economic development. Shared administration to support all of the efforts from the chamber standpoint and the staffing standpoint, outside of specifically our economic development staff, but we have a number of people that play key roles in our economic development efforts and dedicate portions of their time towards that. Business Park Promotion, the Manhattan Business Park, as I mentioned, is a key component of all of our economic development efforts, particularly those related to proposals. And as we're working with, with companies that are looking at Manhattan, that, those properties are always on the list that we're, that we're promoting and, and looking for solutions with those companies. And Janet talked and Jason expounded on the Military Relations Budget Request of $40,000. So that works out to a total of $383,080. Again, that is a decrease of $150,000 for the 2021 budget request versus the budget request in, or the budget that was approved for 2020. That difference That difference is being made up by some, again, some dollars that can be rolled forward from, from 2020 and some private funding as well on our end. So with that, I appreciate the opportunity this evening. Really do want to thank all of you again for stepping up and assisting back in end of March, beginning of April with getting the loan fund up and off the ground. That's, that's something that I was very close to the administration of and something that was incredibly impactful for a large number of businesses in our community that were really hurting and many of them still are very much working through things. But, but being able to provide that bit of a lifeline there and get them to some other support was, was an incredibly important part of what we were able to do. So thank you very much for your support of that and for creating that program. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Darren. Very thorough. I do have several questions, but I'm going to open it up for Commissioner questions and comments before I address anything. Questions for Darren?
This is Aaron. I guess I'll go first. Commissioner Asnerbrook. So this is for Jason, well, Jason or Darren. Really kind of wondering two things. First, let me say thank you for the, kind of the efforts you did during that, what you just mentioned, that lifeline, that gap between funding coming in. That was, I know the Secretary of Commerce at the state level and there was so much coordination and effort and I know that you guys were doing a good job with connecting our, our local businesses with those resources. At the same time, we were, you know, trying to figure it out. But I also wanted to, I wanted to ask, you talked a little bit about how you're promoting and how that media is priceless around NBATH and biosecurity and some of the things that are, this is the right place for that, the right moment. What I'm wondering is how, how do we, how do you feel that we're doing to promote ourselves as a community? How resilient we are? How, what can we do a little bit better or what have we done right in those regards?
Sure, I can kick that off and happy to have Jason chime in too. You know, I think one great selling point we have is that this community went out and this isn't necessarily relevant to current time today, but this community went out and attracted NBATH. And that is a project in that world that is incredibly important and is something that, that we have to hang our hat on. And when we, when we put together information proposals for folks, that's something we highlight. As it relates to the current COVID situation, I think the fact that we're being aggressive with our outreach efforts and our marketing efforts and, and saying this is a time where we need to go out and, and continue to beat the pavement and create, create items, tools that go in that toolkit and, and do the marketing, not just, not just regionally or within the state, but, but, you know, and on a platform where nationally and internationally we're connecting with folks. I think that, that being aggressive at this point in that regard shows our willingness to, our willingness to move forward, shows our resiliency, shows the ability of, of this community of Kansas State University and of a number of other partners to be, you know, to be leaders with, with this current situation. But I think that reflects very well on our community as a whole.
Thank you. I have one follow-up question. It is around the talent and acquisition person. And talking about retention and keeping people here, often in the surveys we have or just in the community in general, we, we hear about housing, right? We hear about the, either the cost, the suitability, whatever you want to say, the housing is a decision piece and that retention component. Recruitment, it's sometimes better, but retention seems to be a problem. Can you talk, I didn't hear anything about housing and I was just wondering if that was going to be a part of your future in this endeavor?
I would expect that that role is going to engage across the board. If it's an issue that's relevant to, to our local employers, being able to attract or retain talent, there's a role that they're going to play within that, you know, within that conversation. And so I think that's, again, it's where we're going to be very targeted and very focused on, on jobs and ultimately then on talent and, and both recruitment and retention of that. And as you alluded to, Commissioner, you know, it's obviously something that we hear the comments. We've, we've been part of those conversations in the past as well when it comes to housing. And yes, there's going to be a role for, there's going to be a role for that position when it comes to any of those, any of those issues that, that ultimately impact our ability to keep people or bring people here to work.
Thank you.
Lynn Butler, I wanted to ask just a couple of things. Now, last December, when we, we sort of committed to two years, sort of a, I think it was a major paradigm shift on how we're doing economic development. And it looks to me like, you know, what we've accomplished so far, because we got websites, Facebook pages, tools, but we haven't really produced any hard results where you couldn't put up a slide and say, I brought in these three companies, this many jobs, this much money, which is to be expected because we had this COVID thing and it's only been seven months. But what I'd like to see, you know, by at least next July, is at least the results. Now, I also got the impression you have what we might call some birds in the hand that we can't talk about yet because of whatever reason. So it sounds like it is working and that's what I think we hoped for in December was to do a little bit of a paradigm shift, dedicate the money for two years. But, but I think next briefing, people are going to expect to see some hard results. I know that's tough to do. And I do appreciate, you know, what was done for local business with the EcoDevo Money, the loan program, because I think that helped out a lot of folks. And hopefully we'll continue, you know, moving on our way to recover. So is that a fair assessment on where we are?
Yeah, well, I might answer that. I think our investors expect results as well. I think our staff expects results. And I would hope by, by December or before that we will have some results to talk about.
Thank you. Questions? More questions?
Commissioner Morris, I just wanted to ask, of the remaining money for the loan program, what are your plans for that? I just have not, I might be the only one that hasn't heard and I'd just like an explanation.
Yeah, no, it's a great question. We put a June 30 deadline for applications. And so, because we felt like we'd moved past what the initial challenges were and we needed to sit down with you all, whether that's through the staff or as a commission, and decide what, what next steps are. If it's, we'll send you back whatever is left, we'd certainly do that. If it's repurposing it for something different, I know we were at a task force meeting recently, somebody brought up the idea of maybe helping with rent for companies that have to close because they have a positive case and have to close for two weeks. You know, there's a variety of ideas out there. We didn't want to confuse it as part of this. And so I think we'd like to visit with you all about that in the near future, if you have ideas or if you want us just to send back what we have.
Thank you. I think it does bear talking about. It's enough money that we can't just forget about it.
We would definitely have returned it if we hadn't heard, you know, if we weren't talking about it.
Yeah, I wanted to ask one other thing. I left it off. You know, with all the, you know, disasters that befell some of the larger cities because the protests got out of hand, is there any opportunity there to attract businesses? I think I sent one to you a couple of weeks ago that I thought was of interest. I'm talking about small businesses because a number of them said they were leaving, you know, those cities because they weren't being protected by fire and police. And of course, we have a fire and police department that will take care of you here and that's part of Marketing Manhattan. Is there any opportunities there? Because it, it appears like there is, but I know it's, it's tough to get somebody to move maybe a long distance.
Darren, you want to take that?
Yeah, those, those opportunities definitely exist and we will, will actively pursue them. I did leave out that, yeah, that's, that's a piece of that talent retention and attraction component. You know, we're paying very close attention to the fact that there may be an opportunity and you're starting to see it more and more in national media and in the press, the articles about, and I'm sure that that will be followed by studies and we'll see data on this and people's mindsets on this as well, that, that leaving some of the major population centers or some of the major urban areas may, may give you some better opportunity in the future, should, should this type of thing happen again. We've also seen that because of the shift in how a lot of work is being done, a lot more opportunities to work from home or work remotely. Obviously, there was a segment of our economy already that, that was, you know, choose where you want to live and work remotely from there. We can only imagine that will continue to increase. And so going back to some of those quality of life assets and strengths that we have, I think that that's where, that's where there is a real opportunity and that's something we're very cognizant of. Specifically to companies, you did send us something. We did respond to those folks. We put together a full, a, the full package that we would, we would to a company that would have reached out to us as far as utilizing some of these new tools I went through. And so putting together information on, on the community, data and information specific to, to our local workforce and, and statistics there as well as industry-specific data on, on salaries and wages and that sort of thing. And, and a nice, a nice letter to them expressing our, our willingness to, to work going forward. So yep, that's, that's definitely part of our plan.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Linda, did you have other questions?
I think, no, I think I've resolved most of them just by asking questions earlier. And so I think I'm good.
Sounds good. Commissioner Haddasal, did you have any questions or comments?
Nope. I'm, I'm very involved with Chamber activities, so nothing terribly new and not surprising so far. So thanks.
Sounds good. Okay, so this is Mayor Eddy. I do have a few questions and comments.
I think we've always had a very strong relationship with the Chamber of Commerce as well as Kansas State University and other business relations in our community. And I think that's what makes us strong because in other communities that we've gone to, that has not been the case. So I like the, the way we all work together. Sometimes we may not agree on, because we, we, we have different pots of money. So the Chamber represents mostly private industry and city is definitely public. So when we talk about taxpayer funds as well as private funds, it's nice when we collaborate and make things happen. I think it was when we gave the $500,000, that was a good partnership because the Chamber was able to utilize their staff and it took a lot of time and resources and we're still not done. COVID-19 is not out yet, so we may need to utilize that $141,000 in the next few months as well as we move forward. Some of the things with the PPP loans that they gave us, you know, submitted a list of all of the businesses that qualified for those. And I still don't understand completely. I know that if they have 100% employment retention, they have a forgivable loan and if they don't, they pay off some point. But for most of those, you need a bank or a lender to make some of those things happen. And the range was so vast, whether it's from $300,000 to a million for some of them. So I don't even know what that looks like, but that's for all of you to figure out as well as the businesses that are involved. So when I see the presentation, it was well done. I don't have any complaints about that, but I like to stay, I compartmentalize. And Commissioner Butler alluded to the $350,000 we gave for the two years. And at the beginning, when it came in October for five years, we did not accept the proposal because there weren't any benchmarks to it. And we were also looking at a November tax ballot initiative at that point. Then when it was, it came back in December, it was for two years, which was a little bit more palatable and you came back with some benchmarks. So what I would like to see is, you know, I asked Ron to send us back the agreement and it had Exhibit B where it was kind of benchmarked to the goals for the three areas. I would, I like to use like a checklist just to mark off what we have achieved or not achieved or what's been dropped because there was no point to it. So I can better understand how the money is being used. And so I don't know where the 150 you decided to drop came out of. I don't know what happened. I know, you know, one of your employees moved on to another position, so I don't know if it was because of that or where that, why that shortfall happened or you decided you didn't need that at this time. So just for my frame of thought, that's how I function. So when I see a chart that doesn't have the same benchmarks involved, I don't know how to understand that chart, even though it might be simple for the people who put it together. So in the future, that's what I would like to see. Divided into those three categories, you know, we found out Spark got the $100,000 as, as the consultant to achieve their goals or for the entrepreneurial dynamism, dynamism. So there are some guidelines there or benchmarks to see how they're doing. It also probably keeps you on track, but definitely keeps us on track because we will revisit and we will see if that's worth putting into. Maybe you need more, maybe we don't want to do it next time. That's also taxpayer funds and we want to make sure we're utilizing it the way we had designated to utilize it in the agreement. So that's one thing. The other is, like I said, we're still in, in COVID. I like all the programs that are going on at Kansas State University, whether it's trying to find a vaccine or with the animal health corridor or with other businesses that might want to locate here because we do have NBATH and we do do a lot with infectious disease as well as with humans and animals. So I'm glad all of those things are going on. I would like to see a little bit more diversity in your funding and as far as employment. When we look at the $350,000 as far as the three categories that are there, the black entrepreneurs, I guess, met with the Chamber, there was about 50 businesses. I would like to also keep them. When future businesses want to come to Manhattan, they are also looking for diversity. Several of them that are here from different backgrounds choose to leave because there isn't enough to keep them here to build those relationships. And I understand you're going to the 50 top employers as you do your survey, but I also hope we have a, we have a young professionals group, we have a young business women's group. We should have a diversity group of some kind because that's a group that's coming here trying to set up business, but they don't have any support systems. And then they fail and then they leave. And that's what we don't want to see. We want to see how we can support them, keep them here. And that's what the future is going to look like. The future is not going to look like us right here. It's going to look very different and we want to make sure we give them some roots to hold on to so they can grow as well. And they are also taxpayers. So this is also part of that money that we're utilizing. I think the, you know, often in the past, people would talk about shovel-ready sites. I don't know, do we have shovel-ready sites for businesses that want to come here?
You want me to address that question? So we've got small sites, we don't have large sites. And that's what Olson is going to research for us over the next few months and we'll have a report back on that later in the year.
Yeah. And then Commissioner Asnerbrook spoke about housing. So that is a concern to me. We just approved housing for close to $250,000 to $300,000 condominiums. My house is, you know, close to that much. So I don't know what kind of people we are looking at to recruit and retain, but that the City Commission does not have a say in that piece of it. But yeah, I think the proposals, at least for this evening, are good, but that's, like I said, I just would like it to be presented so I understand where the 350 is and where the 183 is. That's the way I, I function because that's what we're going to be working on next year when we look at these contracts all over again.
Can I just clarify one issue? We have not decided to not do anything that we asked the Commission for funding for. The savings occurred primarily because we got a late start. So we were approved in December and obviously you can't start, you know, you can't go, okay, let's get all these things together this month. And then COVID happened. So we were slow to get started, so we had some savings that way. And that's where the majority of that's come from. And then, and then openings during that period. It does not account for Christie's position because we haven't formally decided to not replace that. And in fact, just so you all know, we're visiting with her right now on maybe opportunities on, on what we can do going forward with Regional Imagine and, and the Flint Hills Regional Council and us and working together on that. So that does not account for that because we have not made a formal decision on that. But we've not cut anything that we asked the Commission for funding for. It's, all the savings have just been timing.
Right. And I understand, these are really challenging times. And even if you need to change some of this, because I don't know when we recover from COVID-19, I really don't, not only as a community, but as a state and as a nation. I don't know what that looks like. But in your 2020 to 2025 plan, it was create 500 new jobs. So, you know, we'll see how that works out and we're all in this together and we will work. A work diligently to make that a reality. So, but I, like I said, I just want to check off some things as we go, as Commissioner Butler had mentioned as well. But yeah, I, you know, I trust you with the, with your vision for the city of Manhattan and look forward to collaborating with you and just be as strategic as we can to recruit as many people to come and also the ones that are here to stay in Manhattan.
Just one other comment. I just want to publicly state how fortunate we all are as a community to to have talked Darren into coming to work for us, particularly at the time that he did. I think most of you know Darren's a Manhattan kid and grew up here and, but his expertise in business financing at the time that we COVID hit was so instrumental, not only in facilitating the emergency loans, but but advising companies on PPP and Small Business Administration and all the other programs that are available. We would not have been able to achieve and work with the businesses that we did without him being here. And so I just, I want to say how much we appreciate that. And we're also very fortunate that, that we also got George Cant, another Manhattan kid, who who came to work for us as well after spending over two decades working for the Sprint Corporation and, and is well overqualified for his job, but just really wanted to be back in Manhattan. And so I'm, I'm really pleased with those two individuals as well as Janet. I think we have a great team and I'm, I'm really excited and I hope you all are too.
No, I agree. I think you do have a great team. Could you just tell me a little bit about how your conversation or what you see as far as meeting with the, the black business community? I know, I think they had a meeting with you, but I never got any feedback back about it.
They presented some ideas and that they had, and we looked at those and felt like they were all fairly reasonable and, and so we're still working on that. I did also had a conversation actually today with Topeka Chamber. They have a full-time diversity person and with a sizable budget. And, and so I thought, I asked them if there was things that we could do collectively, whether it was just us in Topeka or whether it was even through metal to create more opportunities in programming. And so we're, we're real excited about, she, she was real excited about those kind of opportunities. There's already some of these black entrepreneurs here that are involved in Topeka anyway. And so trying to just do as much as we can with with our limited resources, I think partnerships and being very specific about promoting minority-owned businesses, I think that's, that's, that's something they do in a lot of communities and is a fairly easy step for us is, and specifically black-owned businesses. So we're, I think we're moving on a good track and hopefully we'll, we'll be able to follow up with them very, very soon.
I agree. Thank you. Kind of like what Janet does for the military, we need a liaison of that sort because several of them have said they will be moving back, moving over to Kansas City or to Wichita even. So I just want to make sure we have that connection. Thanks for that, that feedback, Jason. I appreciate it.
Good. If that's all, we'll let Karen move forward.
Yes. Karen, take it away.
Thanks, Commissioners. Who would have ever have dreamed that this would be my second time to present virtually to you all? Being just a tad bit of an extrovert, this is really hard to just see people on television screens, so, or on a computer screen. But it is always, always our pleasure to be able to share with you what is taking place in our community. As you know, our mission is to expand the local area economy by attracting visitors to us virtually, by attracting visitors to come see us. We've done that virtually during this pandemic. You currently are seeing what our week-to-week occupancy looked like for the month of June. It's certainly not anything that traditional June looks like. The third week of June, June the 14th through the 20th, had a slight uptick with the highest occupancy being 46%. That's the highest, that's the highest occupancy that we had since March. On average, COVID hit us the second week of March, so for the past 15 weeks, our weekly average occupancy has been 27.9%. The next slide shows the month-to-month, showing what month-to-month our May looks like. I will probably get that STAR report tomorrow. Our timing is always just a little bit off for the month of June. But the month of May, our occupancy was 29.7%, which is nearly a 40% drop from years past. The year-to-date STAR report shows that for the month of May, the occupancy was at 40%, a 22.5% decrease from last year-to-date in May. I wish I had cheerier news to share. During the second quarter, this report reflects meetings and events that Visit Manhattan worked directly with during the second quarter. During the month of April, May, there were no meetings or events that we interacted with. That doesn't mean that there weren't small meetings that were taking place, but that the CDB directly worked with. There were four meetings or events that were held in June, two golf meetings, two golf events, and two baseball events. As you take a look at that estimated economic impact that reflect 2016 through 18, that's a reminder that that is reflective of when Country Stampede was here. During the month of June, Country Stampede had traditionally been a huge economic driver for us, with stampede attendance, attendance being figured with that economic impact of being a little over $8 million. That was equal to about 10,000 attendees for three days, spending $291 per day. That's how those numbers are so much bigger in 16, 17, and 18. Now, this report reflects, just a second, there you go. Our sales team continues to have interaction with our meeting planners for the status of meetings. These four meetings and events have been rescheduled for either later this year or into 2021. What Manhattan is seeing follows the national trend with postponed meetings being the favored alternative. Meeting planners are living with the three Ps: postponing, pausing, or pivoting. Postponing means pushing that meeting back until they feel a little bit more confident for their meeting attendees. Pausing is simply a nice way to say we're canceling that meeting. And pivoting means doing what we're doing, going virtual meeting via Zoom. According to Smart Meetings, it's a national publication that we partner with. Moving a meeting to a future date is the most common response that we are seeing nationally. Nationally, 50%, 56% of planners are canceling meetings due to a risk that they are unwilling to take. 69% are postponing and 51% of meeting planners are pivoting to that virtual meeting. Cancellations hurt. We have had 50 meeting planners that have had to cancel. Boards make that determining, that determining decision to cancel or to reschedule. Regardless of that decision, to not hold a meeting in our community is a huge hit for our, for our meeting venues, for our lodging, for our entertainment, for our dining, for our attractions. All of those entities that make Manhattan a great community are affected when meetings are not able to be held. These 50 meetings that have been canceled, canceled reflect an $8 million economic impact. We aren't totally discouraged. Like Darren joining the Economic Development Team, we also hired a brand-new convention sales manager, and she began her first day on the job in the month of March. Amber Willem is, is our new convention sales manager, and she's doing a great job working with meeting planners in this very difficult time. She has yet to experience a typical day in the office, but she continues to be involved with organizations that potentially can bring meetings into our community. The KCSAE, KSAE, and PCMA all have had meetings that have been virtual. You can see on this slide, those virtual meetings have had slight attendance, but we have had that opportunity to make a big impression. KSAE was the only group that met in person with masks and socially distanced, bring your own lunch as a picnic, where she had the opportunity to interact with those meeting planners and to keep them updated as to what is happening on the meeting world here in Manhattan. Also, virtual is, is a great way to be able to showcase our videos and to be able to have that opportunity to reach those planners, and we're very appreciative of those efforts that have been made. The next slide, we're going to show you just one video here that we have been using to interact with our meeting planners. We continue to update these meeting planners with monthly videos of the Conference Center expansion. Take a look as we get this loaded. Hey, Brad, summer's officially here. Construction time is coming in hot. Can you give us an update as to what's happening here at the Manhattan Conference Center?
Well, Karen, first of all, thank you for being here. We are really, really excited about all the updates we have to share. Right now, the crew is installing carpet, which we'll show you here in a few moments, as with painting and completing everything with the columns with stone and things outside. But they're really tightening everything down on the existing space, and they'll be rolling in with the carpet, finishing that out probably at the end of next week. But things are moving along at a wonderful, wonderful pace.
Great. Brad, we know that we've been taking COVID precautions as we continue to promote Manhattan, encourage our meeting planners to consider Manhattan as their meeting destination. We couldn't be more pleased with the changes that have been made here. So we're looking at, we'll see some of the improvements that are being made, the updates, the upgrades. Tell us what meeting planners should be most excited about as they choose the Manhattan Conference Center to meet in.
Well, wonderful question. One thing they can definitely feel confident in and having a one-stop shop. We have taken a lot of measures to go ahead and provide safety and peace of mind only for the meeting planner, but also for those which are attending. There's a lot of different things that are being shared on a daily basis. We're trying to be as aggressive in getting things, not only in serving food, but also for our staff to go ahead and provide that extra precautionary measure to give everybody a peace of mind when they do walk in, regardless if they're not wanting a mask or they are definitely wanting to have masks, gloves and all that. We're going to go ahead and work very closely with all the meeting planners to make sure we tailor the type of service and form at a level that really provides a level of comfort for them.
That's great, Brad. We really appreciate it. One of our campaigns that we have going is Oh Manhattan, what a great place to meet in. And so we thank you for your efforts. We look forward to meeting planners as they come to Manhattan to, again, be delighted as they've chosen us as their destinations. Thanks for joining us on this tour of the Manhattan Conference Center. We hope you've enjoyed the updates that we've been bringing to you. We know we're certainly excited about getting the Conference Center expansion completed. Look for us in July to give you an up-to-date example of what your meeting could look like. And then the grand reopening will be scheduled sometime in August. We'll keep you posted. We've had a great response with these updates. We've had a great response from our planners that are eager to use Manhattan as a, as a place. As you can see from that video, we've stressed the use of masks, social distancing, the cleaning procedures, all of that that is being done at the Manhattan Conference Center. Prior to COVID, we had planned on hosting a ribbon-cutting, a day-long event, hosting planners to experience that expansive space. We're now in the process of creating a video that will show the completed space as well as inviting planners to schedule their date individually to come see us in person. Marcia Rosell, who is our Sports and Leisure Sales Manager, has done a great job also during this time during COVID. We see one after another event that has been canceled due to the pandemic that we are experiencing. But Marcia also is very dedicated and is a, is a can-do woman. She has worked with the Manhattan Parks and Rec along with MSP in hosting the baseball and softball tournaments that return to Manhattan in June. Tournament play happened at Twin Oaks and Annenberg Park on June 12th through the 14th with 39 baseball teams competing, and again on June 19th through the 21st with 36 softball teams registered to play. We specifically want to thank Manhattan Parks and Rec for preparing the fields and providing a safe environment for the teams, players, and fans all to enjoy. We continue to connect with our digital audiences across multiple social media platforms. We create an awareness of Manhattan and the preference to choose Manhattan as travel decisions are being made. These digital campaigns that are not driven by our website views, rather they reach an audience that is not yet aware of our Visit Manhattan website. The Reach Local campaign is a campaign that is running on platforms of Facebook and YouTube. On YouTube, we are gaining massive exposure with our 2020 video, our Oh Manhattan video that also is being used with economic development and the GMAP efforts. The organic social media is simply that, organic social media content that is everything that we post. We had had a KSU campaign that we had partnered with the KSU Athletics that stopped in March as that partnership was ended, and we are not planning on doing that in 2021, doing to, due to budget cuts. The Fly MHK, as we celebrated the 10th anniversary of the Manhattan Regional Airport, we were able to give away several great Manhattan experiences to our users that were utilizing the Manhattan Regional Airport as their airport of choice. We have postponed the rest of that campaign effort until we see our ridership and confidence again coming back. So again, we will complete that, but it's just on pause right now due to COVID. During the second quarter, we also celebrated National Tourism Week, May 3 through 9, much differently than what we traditionally would celebrate. We featured eight new video segments with local spokespersons representing the significance of travel and tourism to Manhattan and the region. We're not going to take the time to show you those busy videos. Hopefully, you were able to catch those on several of our posts, but those videos were very well received. We had over 46,000, almost 56,000 total impressions, 129 website visits from our social media, and over 10,000 video views with these as people were looking to Manhattan as their community to visit. In reviewing our analytics for the second quarter, we recognize that video, that visitors are still dreaming and planning of when it is as safe for them to travel and to choose Manhattan as their site. Again, we find that our top states that people, that people are inquiring with us from, certainly Kansas, Missouri, California, Oklahoma, and Illinois. Last quarter, those states were exactly the same, except we exchanged Texas for Oklahoma. The next slide shows you the Oh Manhattan video that we have been using. We had over 260,000 views of it on YouTube. This is a huge jump in our views. Our Oh Manhattan video is very, very effective. With our marketing dollars directed towards this, we can effectively make people aware of Manhattan as they show an interest in coming to visit us. I need you, Jason, to go up two more slides. Yeah. On Monday nights, we trust that you have marked that Monday night at 7 o'clock to play bingo. For eight Summer Mondays, we play bingo via Zoom. It's educating, it's entertaining, and it's informing. It's all about Manhattan, things that you didn't know, some of the hidden secrets, the attractions and landmarks that we have to offer. There are two prize winners that receive a prize each night, and as a result, we currently have gained 52 email marketing subscribers. We want to thank the local partners that have partnered with us, Coco Bolos, Cox Brothers, Chick-fil-A, Colbert Hills, and Wildwood Park Adventure. Last Monday, just yesterday, Last Monday, just yesterday, we do have to admit that technology works wonders when it works. But last Monday night, just last evening, we had technology fail. So with that, we had a few disappointed people that were eager to have an opportunity to say bingo, but they will have to wait for another week and we have postponed. It's just caused us to pivot or to push back that bingo game. We now will be playing bingo through August the 10th. We hope you can tune in so that you can also see how those visitors are learning about Manhattan. During COVID, we have seen a 31% increase in inquiries about Manhattan. During the second quarter, we had over 3,000 people that were inquiring, wanting more information as they plan their trips to come to our community. We use email marketing quite effectively. Our email marketing has experienced a 6% increase in our Manhattanans opening rate. And our Meet Manhattan has a 17% increase. These are electronic newsletters that arrive in emails monthly and providing information of the latest happenings in Manhattan. This next slide shows the example of the Manhattanans. This goes to that leisure visitor that's just wanting to know what is happening here. The new design of it shows that this publication, it's eye-catching and it's very informative. For the month of June, they were clicking on wanting more information about bingo, interested in fishing, interested in widgets or family activity, also our Disc Golf and Sunset Zoo. Our email marketing that was focused for our meeting planners, also with the new design that's very eye-catching, their five clicks, hey, those meeting planners also were wanting to know about bingo. And we know that they were clicking on that because of their interest as to how can they entertain their attendees as well. They also are very interested in the May Conference Center expansion update, the video for the May update, which was different than the video you just saw, as well as information that they can find that's more in a short format, that on Facebook and Twitter. We also wanted to share with you the organic social media results. Our biggest following, as you can see, is that on Facebook. And Facebook aligns with who our target demographics are and how visitors look for information online. 2020 is a year of significant budget challenges. The CBB is funded through the transient guest tax collections. As we looked at the STAR report, as we've looked at how meetings are not happening in Manhattan, we know that the transient guest tax receipts are going to be very, very low. Prior to COVID, the CBB receipts received reflected about 60, 65% of the total transient guest tax collections. The city has star bonds, bond and interest, sports facility and the conference center expansion debt that comes out of the total transient guest tax collection. Our budgeting and program is determined by the dollar amount received after those city commitments are made. It's so very imperative for us to know the exact amount we are going to be working with in order to plan our program of work. And we look forward to coming forward and sharing with you what that exact program of work will be in the future once we know. At the time we submitted our budget request, we forecasted a decline in the transient guest tax for the 2021 year of about 30%. With our estimations, we would see that the total amount of TGT collections would be that of about $1.3 million, with dollars directed to the CBB in the amount of about These dollars are used then to fulfill our mission of attracting visitors to Manhattan in order to expand the local area economy. As fall activities become to begin to become a little bit more clear, if they are actually going to happen or not, we are well aware that the receipts that we have estimated could indeed decline even deeper. We appreciate the leadership that you give to the city of Manhattan during these very, very difficult times. Manhattan is a very attractive community that's surrounded with attractions, both natural and man-made. We have a great story to share with our visitors as they come to meet or to visit. Our job is to tell the story well. With that, who might have the first question or comment for me?
Thank you, Karen, always. Challenging times, but you did a really great job. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for Karen this evening? Doesn't seem to be any. Karen, I know, like you said, meetings have really dropped as well as tournaments, everything that we rely on for transient guest tax. But also that's how we get sales taxes, by people coming and spending money. So we also see a revenue loss in both of those areas. And it's probably not going to change for a little bit. Also depends on where Kansas State University goes with having spectator sports or no spectator sports. And so everything is still up in the air. But I do appreciate your budgeting skills and keeping some money aside so you can, CBB still does well. And I think we will have better times. It may not just happen immediately, but Manhattan's a great place to visit and I'm glad people are interested, especially now that people are staying home. Even the Manhattanites are looking for things to do around town. So I think that's the other piece that's going on too, just what can we do in our surrounding Flith Hills area, region? And maybe having more outdoor musics, things where you can sit far apart and listen to some of these things. People are getting creative and innovative. And we did pass a couple of ordinances for outdoor dining. So hopefully that, you know, keeps people at least visiting our community. But again, thanks for all you're doing and we'll continue to work together.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did want to make one comment, Karen. We talked on the phone there. Is there any possibility, you know, of trying to make Manhattan like a vacation site for people that want to go on these short three, four-day vacations? Because apparently nobody's getting on planes and nobody's getting on cruise boats. And maybe we could somehow or other package some kind of a deal where, you know, come visit Manhattan and here's what you can do and partner up with different things, the zip line guy and, you know, some of the other things we've got going here, a couple of restaurants that are still functioning well with that, you know, the outside dining. We would have to sell the mask thing. Maybe we can give them a free mask as they come in for all the locations, something of that nature.
You're absolutely correct. And certainly our team here has been working diligently in order to get that message out. We know that not only here in Manhattan, but nationally, people are doing that, just that very thing, taking short day trips where they can go stay the night. That confidence, that customer confidence is so very, very important. As we have been delivering that message that it's safe to stay in our lodging, here are the places that you can dine, the attractions that are open, the things that you can do. Certainly, I love to share the story of Tuttle Creek, that Tuttle Creek has said that they have had Memorial Days every single weekend with people that are going out to camp and to be able to enjoy the great outdoors. So again, it's very important for us to make sure that we are helping to deliver that message of what there is to see and do, give them an opportunity to know that they can stay, those visitors can stay in Manhattan, maybe can linger a little bit longer. The hecticness, when there is a lot of activity that's going on, maybe they have that opportunity to really, to take a hike on the Kanza, to really to be able to go on trails that they haven't been able to enjoy before. So all of that is so very important. Also, the challenge that we are finding in our team does a great job of helping those planners or those visitors truly understand what some of the, what's the word that I want to say? What some of our limitations are in our community? For example, that we require masks in our community. We are doing our best to help our visitors understand that, that masks are required. Certainly it's on businesses as well, but just to keep them informed. One of our meeting planners was trying to figure out today, the ordinance, that was the word I was looking for, ordinance, what that meant for gatherings of 50 people today. Does that mean 50 people in a group and then 50 people in another group? Or what exactly does that mean? So our team is very much on top of some of those questions and how to be able to deliver that to people that are inquiring.
Great. Yeah, challenging times, but I'm sure we will, we will get through this and hopefully have more outdoor activities. And I know Marcia's kayaking, obviously kayak visit this weekend, so that's great. I'm glad. There are lots of outdoor activities to do in groups, still enjoy the weather and still maintain all the precautions that we have in place.
Mayor, this is Commissioner Espruque, real quick. Karen, I just wanted you to know, I think the last time you presented might have been the last time we had good news. And it was, the thing that I held on to from your presentation was that Manhattan was, you were hearing that the Midwest and the heartland, that Manhattan was in a position to be more resilient. Has there been any more, is there any more good news to follow that up? And I think that goes along with maybe what Jason and Darren were talking about too.
Sure. Well, and again, that good news is, I talked to, actually I talked to Brad Everett today. And, you know, we do see glimmers of hope. Certainly our hotels all across the community have been hurt significantly, certainly looking at that STAR report. It's pretty easy to get discouraged pretty quickly. But we do see a glimmer. We do not anticipate that 2020 will be anything at all like what we have experienced in the past. But Manhattan is still a destination that people like to meet in, that people like to recreate in, and that people like to come and just enjoy. And that tags so well into what the other presentations that you have heard this evening being given, that you have a good time and you're welcomed, then that also allows you that opportunity to think about, what if I were to retire here? What if I were to move my business here? What if I were to allow my kids to come to school here? All of that is so very important for us to work together because when we all, all of our divisions work together, we as a community come out the winner. So it's bleak times, but certainly as we shoulder this together, we will get through this.
Thank you, Karen, for the presentation and for joining us this evening.
My pleasure.
So Ron, is it Economic Development Fund?
Not quite. So if I could, while Karen is still on, I do want to point out some discussion in the memo, background memo that we provided to the commission. As Karen said, it's been very challenging to try to identify really what that revenue is going to be. For example, in her TGT revenues, she pointed out 1.9 million and suggesting a 30% drop roughly to 1.3. But if you look at the other ways we utilize the TGT funds, at least what we did in the 2020 budget, we've got two sets of charts there. We've got some of the outside agencies that were chosen to be funded out of the transient guest tax funds. And then we had what Karen alluded to were some of our ongoing obligations. So our debt service payment on the existing conference center, that 93,000, the debt service payment on the artificial turf out at Annenberg of 224,750. We had targeted to make, start putting away some cash for the expansion of the conference center, to make a cash payment as we are working on construction financing to pay down what the amount is we would bond. So that's not one that we have to make a payment on, but obviously by not, we won't be able to pay down as much probably. And then the 90,000 that we, the state requires us to make, whether or not the state will give us any leniency on that, I don't know. But that's something that we have. So with the current request that the CBB has made of the 1.3, or excuse me, the 924,000, and if we provide some similar type cuts of 30% to some of these other entities, it leaves us about 226,000 short of being able to make everything even out. And so one of the things we're going to want some direction on, and again, you know, we're not sure whether that 30% reduction's accurate. So one of the things with the transient guest tax funds, and Karen, you can correct me if I'm wrong, or Jason, but there's a lag in receiving the money. We get monthly revenue, but it's kind of like our sales tax. It runs behind. So I think actually the TGT revenue is more like three months behind where the sales tax regularly is about two months behind, but I may be wrong on that. Maybe it's only two months, but.
That's correct.
Basically, we're looking at the last quarter of this year would be part of the revenue stream for next year. So that will likely impact us. And that's kind of where, you know, that's kind of saying, well, we kind of hope to be back to normal in January of 21. That might be pretty optimistic so that we're, you know, we're only going to lose that 30% in that last quarter of this year. So those are just some things as we try to pinpoint some expectations for a budget number about a month from now, that you will have to pass a budget. That's going to be a challenge for us to kind of identify what that target is for this budget, as well as whether or not, how you're going to divvy it up to all of those that have been relying on it, including ourselves, for some of our debt service payments and other aspects. So I don't necessarily need an answer tonight, but if you have questions or you will need additional information from us for how you want us to look at that and giving you some options for the future, that'll be important. And again, one of the things that really helped us this year was that Karen and the CBB and the chamber leadership had insight to create a reserve fund, which they were, allowed them to tap into, which helped keep everybody a little bit more whole, although everybody's going to be shorted significantly this year as well. So those are just some thoughts to keep in mind. So that, that kind of dollar number we're looking for is roughly in the $205,000 range roughly that we need to make up and determine where we're going to, if that number of 1.382 million is accurate. So that's, that's some of the challenges we face in this fund. And so that would be some feedback that certainly I think Karen's going to want to know if there's an expectation for additional reductions in that 924, or we're going to just do something and we're going to do some priority analysis? Or are we going to do some across-the-board analysis? We've kind of made an across-the-board analysis at this point. So that's the kind of feedback that we're going to need in establishing that budget. And, you know, do you think 30% is optimistic? Now, what we do is distribute these funds on a quarterly basis and so to these entities. And we always have caveats in our agreement that, you know, we're going to make those payments to them on that basis as long as the revenue is there to do it. So that's, that's something that as always, we will continue to have. But I think something that we should try to do is if we agree that 1.382 is the number that we should be focusing on, how are we going to divvy that up? So.
I think, thanks, Ron. I think Commissioner Haddas had a comment or question.
Yeah, Ron, I just, on that, on that debt table you have there, just because we budget 30% less doesn't mean we can get by paying 30% less. Where is that difference in money supposed to come from? Obviously, if it's not in the TGT, is that where can we get by paying 30% less on our debt? Or do we have to figure that, make that up?
We would have to find it somewhere else. So the only one that's probably not a mandatory payment would be the 90,000 on the conference center expansion. Again, that was a plan to put some cash down towards making a down payment before we put the permanent bonding in place. All of those other ones are existing obligations that have to be paid. So yeah, we can't, we'll have to pay it from somewhere else. We'll either have to make cuts in city budgets to make that, or transfers from other, other components or other funds to, to help with that. So those are.
While we're saving money from the transient. While we're saving money from the transient guest tax fund, or because there's less money there, that doesn't mean we can get away with spending less. We still got to come up with the money.
Correct. Yeah, the only ones that you have some discretion on are the other programmings above in the other chart.
Alright, thanks.
Yeah, I have a question on, you know, the use of the Economic Development Fund. There's three of them there, and I saw the other chart with the various numbers. And I know that in some cases, we might be double-spending this money if you stretch it out to 2032. But it seems like, you know, this conference center expansion and the conference center itself, and maybe even Annenberg Park, is it possible to pay those out of that legally?
So we have paid conference center debt out of economic development. You might recall, Jason, you can help me out here, but the 93,000 was kind of a compromise. I don't know if it was half and half. I think actually the debt service payment out of the ED fund is higher than what we assigned to the TGT fund. So we have split it back and forth. That's an example of that existing conference center that we have made payments out of both of them. The Annenberg Park one, we have utilized, I don't think we've used any economic development funds. We have used some special partner recreation funds for that. You know, I don't think it would be improper to use economic development funds for that debt service payment on Annenberg, but it's something we haven't done in the past.
And I was more concerned, I think the Medofab, you know, had like 858,000 in it. That's the very old one. And I know that's got some other strings attached to it. But I'd like to see us, you know, try to target that. That's going to solve, you know, most of that problem. And then my other suggestion is, and I know no one will like that, is, you know, just strike MAC and the Wolf House out, and they can get their funds through private donations. And I know that's a harsh one, but, you know, when I set a priority list, they would just be on the bottom. And I think that, you know, we put them into this transit guest tax simply because we wanted to support them. We didn't want to raise property taxes to support them. And there was the capability to use the transit guest tax, so that's sort of gone away now. And so it's time to just say, sorry, we're not going to be able to give you that money, and direct people to the Greater Manhattan Community Foundation, please donate, and they can, I'm sure they can raise that amount relatively easy.
Do you want to say something?
I was just going to point out, the 5% reduction that we've been talking to you all about in terms of general fund revenues of 1.5 million, clearly, this 300 or 200K is up and above that. So as we developed strategies previously for the 2.7 million, and we kind of went at it from a 50-50 split between transfers and reduction in services, this would be on top of that. So if we want to look at it from that perspective, it'll go from 2.7 to 2.9 million that we'll be wrestling around with in the weeks to come. Next week, we'll show you a different general fund approach that gets more into our operations in each department. And we'll highlight that 5% and 10% reduction across the board as alternates. But just wanted you to be aware that that 2.7 that we've been referencing will more than likely grow in order to address this piece as well, which we didn't have forecasted quite so high.
See, my other concern is, you know, when you think about, you know, we got this nice economic development briefing, and a key part of it was, you know, quality of life. This is what's going to track people. And then we've got on the chopping block our quality of life. And so we got to somehow reconcile, you know, that fact. And that's why I say, you know, before I would cut more Parks and Rec things, like swimming pools, I would have to line out MAC and the Wolf House. I know that's only 50,000. That's a small dent in what we're talking about. But we've really got to come to grips with some of these things so that we, you know, we accomplish the priority. And I think we've already said, we're not, I think the commission as a whole, we're not game for closing those pools next year. We had to do it this year, but next year, no. And so, you know, something else has got to give. But I don't think we should be, you know, taking our funds and giving them to outside agencies, and then taking it out on our internal agencies like Parks and Rec. And that's what my issue is.
I think we're going to have a lot of discussion on this. I do think we need to look at the Economic Development Funds, or at least some other debt service funds, to take care of the components that you have as debt. Because I think, I don't want us to get behind on those. And that's going to be top priority as far as how do we fund those eventually. Otherwise, it will end up coming out of our general fund right now, even though some of them are already allocated to it. The transient guest tax for those programs that are already set aside, I think the 30% decrease is doable. And if we need to do a little bit more on that, that's, I think that's doable as well. But I also want to be sure that as transient guest tax goes up, that we are also doing something in something of that proportion, instead of saying, that's where we did it last year, therefore, it's going to be at that level forever. Because the reason we are reducing is because transient guest tax is being reduced in and of itself. And if it gets reduced even more, then we'll have to reduce that, those areas for programs even more. But again, our budget discussions are not done. We're going to have a few more of those before we figure out where all of this is going to fall.
See, and I wanted to just comment, when I talk about priorities, I'm sort of in favor of the, you know, business districts because I think they work hand in hand with the CVB and the chamber. And, you know, those are my priorities for funding. So I wouldn't want to see, you know, DMI reduced, or the Aggieville Business District reduced, even at the 30%. I'd rather that came someplace else. And then understanding that the risk there is, you know, if we take on face value the estimate, if the tax is not collected, then clearly, you're not going to get it, you know, for the quarter. And I think everybody's already lived with that before. And if we collect more, well, I don't know if there's a legal procedure to do that. I think it just stays in the fund, and then we can make things better the next year.
Can I ask a question? And I don't know if it's Jason, Ron, or maybe I'd like to hear thoughts about from Commissioner Butler, or anybody else as well, the convention center, that payment, what is that? So there's problems either way in the long-term future of how we pay for that, right? As far as if there isn't a renewal, how we afford to pay for that. So what is the implication? You were saying the only one we have adjusted, Ron, you were saying the only one we have adjustment for is that down payment, that 90,000? Can you speak to that? And then if that is adjusted at all, what is the long-term implications that we're looking at with the convention center anyway?
So you recall that we increased the transient guest tax by a full percent, right? To help pay for the expansion.
Half percent.
And half a percent, sorry. And that's in effect, and we were generating more income. That was part of the strategy that was to put some of the cash aside to help with that down payment. And that's going to be, you know, roughly three and a half, three years from now, since we started construction financing, until we have to permanently issue the bonds for that. That payment is going to be on top of, and with the other, with the south end, star bonds coming and retiring, we're going to see some additional revenue eventually coming back. That $90,000 payment to the state goes away. Again, that's assuming you're back to normal in transient guest tax. So all of those will have a bearing on it. I guess the good news is, is that it's, we've got some time before that we have to issue those permanent bonds. But assuming we're recovered by that, we'll have more bond service potentially to cover if we're not buying those bond downs, that principal down a little bit with saved up cash. Now, it could be with our expansion, we'll get more proceeds. So a lot of that could come into play. But here you see that was kind of the original concepts about that funding plan. And I'll turn it over to Jason because he's certainly been more involved with developing this concept.
As you can see, our half percent was going to generate roughly $130,000 a year. We were going to capture that for four years, set it aside. We recognized $90,000 was going to be set aside once the star bonds were paid for. HCW increased their payment by 10 grand, just for the interest on the loan, but also 20 grand once we get past 2029 through the duration of the note. There is a backstop that's somewhat provided by HCW and CVB. In the event we don't generate the 300K, there's 50,000 that would be set aside for that purpose. So just to back up to the top, it's about a $5 million project. We were going to set aside 520 in cash over the first four years, net about 500,000 from the EcoDevo, buy down that debt, and then debt service it for 20 years, and have roughly a $280,000 in annual payment. So we went ahead and inflated that a little bit and showed revenues for 300K.
See, and I particularly liked that plan because the original one, you know, we were doing things like putting some of it on property tax, taking water funds and paying for it. And of course, I'm against both of those. So I felt like, you know, this needed to be targeted that way. But I guess, you know, long-term, you know, if you take this out to 2032, we're about $3 million short for all the stuff we've been funding. And so what that tells you is that short-term, we can make this work with economic development funds. But if this tax, if you don't create a tax which captures EcoDevo citywide in the real near future, then we're going to have a problem. And it's going to be like about a seven to nine mil levy problem. I mean, that's what it'll be. And I say that much because a 3 million deficit, about seven mils, and then if you don't have that tax in place to lower the bond and interest fund by two mils every year, it could be as high as nine. And so Jason's been talking about strategic planning. And as I look at all these budget things, the only way to do strategic planning on the budget is to understand that we need to put back in place a fourth tax to replace the three that we got right now to generate these revenues. And without it, then the strategic plan has to be increasing property tax. And I'm the last guy that wants to do that. But the numbers are not going to work out otherwise.
Jason, thank you for putting up that slide. You know, it kind of refreshes the memory when you're looking at so many things all at once, and you're more at ease at flipping back and forth to different things that we discuss. But again, that will come back into our, all of our discussions with the budget. We have some difficult decisions to make, but I'm sure the next topic will bring us to the forefront of what we need to be discussing as far as the sales tax that Commissioner Butler had just mentioned. I don't know if you're ready to transition, or if you're looking for feedback.
Ready to transition if you all are.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So we wanted to provide you an update on the fund, as well as talk to you a little bit about the 2023 tax. Just a quick reminder, we have three different funds. Each of them have a certain amount or a balance that is available now. Some of those balances exist. Some of those are about future responsibilities, revenues, allocations. So you'll notice the '02 to '12 balance of 5.9 million, a lot of that is from the annual 457, 457,000 and so change from K-State we'll be receiving for the payment on the KSUIC building. So that current balance today isn't near that. But over the next 12, 13 years, that payment will come through and increase that balance. You'll see the negative 3.2 million in the 2012 money, if you run that out through 2032. So clearly, we've been talking about using some existing balances in that '02 to '12 money, as we've made some commitments and ran some debt service out for the full term. So we wanted to provide you that and look at this total combined fund availability. And that takes Medofab, the '02 money, and the '12 money, puts them all into basically one funding source, and then runs out projected revenues and expenditures for the next 12 years. That gets us through 2032, and that's where we leave you with a three and a half million dollar balance in that fund, or overall, all three funds combined. The commitments that are made in the 2012 to 2022 are well over 10 million. Those projected expenditures are basically debt service for things that aren't necessarily on this next slides list, but they have been included in debt service for public infrastructure since 2012. Yes, we have a little over 6.3 million in revenue projected, and our starting cash coming into 2020 was 5.2. So that's how we get to this 3.2. To highlight that 10.7 million, which obviously takes us into a negative cash balance in this fund, I really want to call your attention to the years we used here for a variety of different commitments. Clearly, the community house and the money set aside for the conference center have been part of this overall perspective. But we have annual commitments that we make. We have debt service on projects on North Manhattan, several of them. And we have this accumulation of money for College and Kimball. We run these things out by certain dates. Some of them, the debt service runs, you know, the full term. Some go out to 2032. Some debt service stops in '28. There are a few commitments we stopped in '22 in order to just show you what the balance would be. And I know some of these conversations have been, you know, in the past, hey, how much do we have? How much will we have? Well, a lot of that depends on how many years you run these things out. Now, clearly, these projects, these 210, 210, and this 210, all run out for the term of the debt itself. Those are the full debt service payments through those years on those projects. That money could clearly come back into play if you don't want to debt service it for 10 years, and you want to use it for a different purpose. You know, it can get moved around, or if you never did renew, then you would have, you or a future commission would have tough decisions on, are we going to take money out of future debt service payments and use it today? And then find a way to fund that project down the road. Those decisions could clearly be made in the future. So this evening, we wanted to talk to you a little bit about options. We've highlighted these before. As you know, we're part of a county tax today. We receive roughly 61% of what the county receives on their half cent. So we get $3 million annually. That's been pretty consistent. It's about 30 million over that 10-year period. If we would take that and just make it a city tax, it'd be a new tax, but it would replace the half cent potentially. Not sure what the county's going to do. It would be difficult for them to try to renew that without the city's participation and identification of how they would use that from an economic development standpoint. But it wouldn't be something that they couldn't explore. They also have the ability by statute to explore a roads and bridges sales tax for a five-year period, and counties across the state of Kansas have done that. But this replacement is at a half-cent rate. So the rate would stay the same in Riley County for Manhattan. It would grow in Pike County by that half percent, but it would generate 6.5 million a year, 65 over the 10. So a lot of the options to renew or replace have been discussed with respect to the next three voting cycles. So clearly, we have a presidential election this November, and we expect well over 20,000 people to vote, much like they did in 2016. 2021, we had 7,500 voters show up for the 2019 election, which is a city-only offer. And that would be the same for '21. It would be basically city commissioners and very few other options for voters to It would be basically city commissioners and very few other options for voters to go to the polls. 2022 would be probably more reflective of 2018 when the governor race because of, I'm sorry, 2016, because this would be the governor race as well, 2022. So you would expect a very high voter turnout at that election as well. So we had the next three years to consider not only years to vote, but the years to plan, position and invest in our community. The longer we put out that question, the more difficult the immediate years become. And my example to you all is waiting until 2022 to ask this question. Obviously, two, it's three cycles away from actually reaching the electorate. Knowing where your balances are today, knowing the challenges that ED fund will have, it's difficult to commit or even overcommit that fund any further without knowing where we're going to be 2023 through 2032. It's difficult to commit to major infrastructure projects. It's difficult to react to a lot of prospects that we envisioned coming online with MBAF. I think Darren and Jason did a great job highlighting we're already picking up interest in this community. We've met with a lot of companies, a lot of different opportunities. We envision that will grow. Being in a position for the next two to three years to aggressively react to those can make a really significant difference in in the amount of jobs that we recruit and retain here in Manhattan. So one option is to go ahead and look at this point five as a city tax and which would take effect January 1 of 2023. It would essentially replace that tax. And as I mentioned, that Riley County tax rate would basically stay the same at 8.95 as it is today. It would increase on the pot side. And we've talked a lot about this, even at the leaders retreat in January. There was a big discussion on this and how it would impact on the on the potawatomi side. Clearly, going from 3 million a year to 6 and a half million a year, you recognize the power of being able to get into that potawatomi side of Manhattan and leverage sales that are taking place in Pot County. So the question itself, we would need to spend some time on. We legal staff and in our office have spent a little bit of time on this, highlighting a lot of the the same pieces and parts that we have in the past. But for the last 20 years, we've really had to define economic development as it pertained to the Riley County question. And it's been a struggle over the last 20 years to to fully engage with that definition in the question, because it's been something that we've had to kind of shoehorn in there and then further define in a resolution adopted by the commission. And that has really been our education process moving forward. We can still do that, but we could also write the question in a way that perhaps is a little bit more self explanatory as to how we're going to use the the proceeds. So reducing property taxes, not only on the current debt, but on future debt related to public infrastructure. And then the economic development arm, where as Jason and Darren highlighted, that recruitment, that retention, that prosperity, those jobs, that growth that Manhattan desperately is seeking and needing right now. That current tax, again, we're looking at a 3565 split. We put $1 million towards the bond and interest. We take $2 million and put it in that ED fund, which has been split between infrastructure and jobs. And as we've shown you before, that $1 million in that on an interest fund has had, you know, hovering right around a two mil impact of the past several years. And that's just at $1 million. We looked at a scenario where we keep that structure at 3565 moving forward with the 2023 tax. And it it starts to split out this way where you have 2.24 million on the on the debt side and 4.22 on the public infrastructure economic development. The option that we've also highlighted for you really starts to carve off money for economic development and jobs. There's been a lot of feedback over the last 20 years, more more probably so in the last five with some frustration on just where the money is being carved off and and really dedicated towards jobs. We've seen less applications in the last, you know, eight years. We've seen let and and really we tightened up the restrictions and the rules in 2010 right before we renewed in in 2012. And it it really set us down a path for for the last eight years. I think where Jason and Darren are highlighting and being more aggressive and working with a lot more of the entrepreneurs, startups, the incubators. We've all heard presentations and and comments about even the great paper straws of Manhattan needing space. So many companies that we've met with over the last two, three years with Rebecca Robinson and the Chamber. It's been about 1,500 to 2,500 square feet. They don't want to invest a bunch of capital in buildings. They want to rent space. They want to grow their businesses from three to five individuals to 10 to 15 to 20. And our economic development model and the the process and the policies that we have in place today is a very difficult thing to fit. And when it comes to those small businesses trying to grow and become larger businesses in our man and in the community. Setting aside 1.3 million annually to the Chamber obviously would help fund their staffing levels, which we've seen, you know, this year beat around a half million and now they're they came back with their request lowering that by 150,000 for 21. But had indicated that by 2022, they want to be back to that half million, $550,000 threshold. So that would that would afford then another 750 K that could actually be set aside for recruitment, incentive packages, investment opportunities that could leverage more opportunities in in the community for businesses. It would answer a lot of the the heartburn and questions that we've had over the years about setting that money aside. And it would place it with our economic development arm. We have a relationship, it's an annual contract, you get reports. The commission could get updated very frequently from the Chamber on how these dollars are being used, how they're being leveraged, the jobs they're creating, much like the benchmarks and the statistics you've been asking for this evening, Mayor. Those things could continue with this money behind and and as a as an incentive for them to continue to perform. And then 60% set to public infrastructure, 20% to debt. That 1.3 million would obviously be over two mills in in the bond and interest, which would be a welcome sight in the bond and interest. We know we've got some additional debt coming online that's going to require that bond and interest to get some support somewhere. We had talked about having potentially go to the mill levy, but this would obviously kick in over a half a mil in revenue that would that would help that that fund dramatically. The 60% on the public infrastructure, 3.9 million a year for 10 years, nearly $40 million. We have a lot of infrastructure opportunities. We've worked a long time to get us to the point where we're at with not only Aggieville and North Campus, but the airport has some things on the horizon. We've got plans and projects for Setchild Corridor, Fort Riley Boulevard, Anderson. There's just a lot of infrastructure needs that are going to take place over the next 10, 15 years. And we'll be in the planning mode and implementation mode on a lot of that by the last, you know, the latter half of this 10 year period. We'll start to see some of those things come to fruition. So the next steps are really, we have to have a question submitted to the county if we want to pursue it this November by September 1. So that leaves us a couple of meetings here in July and a few meetings in August to really get our arms around what it is we'd like to do. There is this optional resolution, which is where a lot of the policy is defined. And that sets forth educational campaign materials. And it elaborates on the intent of the question. Yes, we're talking about debt, not only of existing, but future public infrastructure, but economic development. We can get into that resolution a little bit in the coming meetings and help define what those things mean to the governing body as well as try to lay a framework then for the education process. That distribution of funds is also highlighted in the existing resolution as well as just other commitments that you make by definitions. So as I mentioned, other meetings, we could consider ballot question, language, policy resolutions coming up next Tuesday, July 21. And then the legislating meetings in the in August as well. Education then would ramp up, be part of our September, October timeframe. Still a lot of questions on just how many people are going to be showing up to vote in person? How many are going to be voting in advance voting? We know advance voting starts October 14th. So if you're mailing in your ballot or you're you're advanced, going in advance to to vote, those opportunities are quickly on the horizon and then Election Day on November 3rd. Why now? I think I touched on a lot of these. It's something that take advantage of a presidential election where you spend a lot of your time and effort and energy educating your community to see 20,000 people show up to vote and actually give their opinion on how this money should be spent over the next decade and the future of this community is impactful to go to 20,000. If you reduce that down to 7,500, it it makes it more difficult to reach that audience, obviously, and get them to to weigh in and provide provide direction for the community for the next 10 years. Planning for the future, we do a lot of it. You know, I've often commented, it takes us four to five years to really implement anything. We've been working on a lot of major initiatives that are just getting started that date back to 2014, 2015, 2016, when we started those things. My challenge to this community is what is next? Because if you want to be in a position to start investing in 2025 and 2026, we need to start talking about it today. Because it just takes that long to get through our process, get the appropriate firms and individuals hired to help us identify that vision and execute it. So we need a time to to plan. We also need to partner with the Chamber where Jason and Darren are going with their vision and and working with Rebecca and Kent up at K-State. There are just great opportunities on the horizon and we need to explore those and and augment that as much as we can. There's a recovery for COVID-19 that needs to be talked about. There's a hunger in this community to know what the plan is. A lot of it on the heels of COVID-19. Ned Seaton wrote about it about a month ago. What is the plan? And I think a lot of people are asking that right now. If if this question moves forward in 2020, we're going to have to define it and we're going to have to get out there and educate. And so that the folks who are voting understand what it is we'll be doing with these funds for the next 12 years. Commitment to economic development. I know no better way than to set aside $13 million for the Chamber over the next 10 years to grow and prosper and and bring all types of opportunities to Manhattan. They need money to do it. They need the funding behind them. They need the commitment and we need we need them as an arm, as an as a group to go out and do this every day. Possibly our procedures and policies need to be modified to allow them to do that, give them greater flexibility. As I mentioned, there's a lot of commitment to Aggieville and North Campus. I know I'm a broken record on this. We've been working on it a long time. There's great opportunities with both of these districts. They're going to become more attractive and places where businesses and people want to visit. We've seen that over and over in our our research and our our feedback from our community. And we have gaps. We've identified those gaps. That funding is is out there. We're making strides, got a great grant announcement last week. Very excited about that. That's a huge hole that $3 million will fill and it's it's very helpful. Property tax relief, bond and interest fund. We know that city debt is on the horizon. We've made a lot of commitments to infrastructure in the past few years. Those payments are going to be due and this will allow us to continue to move forward and plan effectively. Major initiatives, and again, it's that vision. I think there's just a hunger out there, a real interest in how this community is going to bounce back. There's a lot of factors at play into that, but having the resources at our disposal in order to execute and partner with K-State, partner with the Chamber, partner with our business community to really prosper in the coming years, we need that plan as soon as we can get it. This is the possible question we included in your packet. And we can sit down with Katie Jackson, our city attorney at a future session and really dive into why our questions have to be so long? Why do they have to say so much? There's reasons for that and she can expand on that at future meetings. I I underline emboldened an area that I don't think she'll let me submit the question that way, but it really highlights where the emphasis is for this question and what its purpose is for the next 10 years, starting in 23. But we can talk to her about structure and validity of questions moving forward. We've had those conversations in the past. I would imagine we'd have them again. There's a lot of questions surrounding those. So guidance moving forward this evening, just look and see if there's an interest in moving forward with the 2020 November ballot. If yes, give some thought to that distribution of funds. We can set that up either way in the in the resolution itself. And then, yeah, the process and the procedures. Very heavy on capital investment, very heavy, heavy on jobs. Significant numbers before you're able to leverage our incentive packages today. In the past eight years, we've awarded three different packages. Obviously, you all know that the faded Tallgrass Brewery, unfortunately. The foundation continues to to thrive in the building we helped incentivize there. And then Ultra ICE has backed out of their incentive package. So they won't be pursuing that anytime soon. So those are the three major applicant applications that we've processed. So, yeah, there there's some opportunity here to really look at being more nimble and flexible moving forward. Happy to answer any questions. I assume our partners at the Chamber stuck on here too, in case you have questions with them as well.
Recently, I have one question I'd like to ask about the Ultra ICE. Because they didn't, what I heard was they hadn't spent any of it. Are they giving it back then or have they?
We never awarded them any funds at all.
Okay.
I have my thoughts on these questions, but I'll open it up for Commissioner comments and questions to be addressed before I.
Commissioner Haddas all here. I I'm a huge Chamber supporter, but I am not really in favor of automatically giving them 1.3 million a year, even though they sort of do the yearly deal. But I would be kind of interested in the 301060 plan. 30% for property tax, 10% for we could, we could every year sort of give it to the Chamber. That'd be 600,000 or something. And then the other 60% would go toward our infrastructure stuff, which I think a lot of that infrastructure could be used for economic development, bright ideas, correct?
It it could be. And and what we were trying to do is get them a pot of money that they wouldn't necessarily have to expose the clientele and the applicant through our public process. There's a lot of communities and economic development partnerships that create something separate. So it's easier for those businesses to access and and work through that process without it being so public. And Ron and I have talked about this a little bit. There might be a threshold, you know, once it reaches a certain point above and it does become something the commission would consider, but give the Chamber some flexibility on some lower tiered options for those businesses.
Okay, well, I I think I would be okay with the the 1.3 million if if like half of it or 700,000 of it was set aside into a fund. You you didn't say it, but it almost sounded like they could spend a million, three on on staff and people to work the whole economic development thing, which would seem like overkill. I can't imagine keep that many people busy. But if it was, yeah, half a million for for salaries, wages, travel, promotion, and then 750 or 800,000 for the actual whatever it takes to get those new businesses to grow, stay, expand, whatever. I I would be okay with that. I just wanted, I'm just not interested in that. Yeah, if it's separated sort of to where, yeah, it's it's not sort of be considered all spent by the Chamber in the process of doing their work. But if a bunch of it was saved for doing the stuff that's outside of the city's infrastructure needs, I I, yeah, I I think I could be okay with that part. And I don't know what would happen if we just did the 3565. And I don't know what would happen if we just did the 35, 65. How would we fund the, the Chamber's economic development stuff? Would that be out of the 65% then?
More than likely, Mark. Yeah. And that's essentially what we do today. So this, you know, the 35 goes to debt service, 65 comes into the fund. We spend that fund on a variety of things. There's a lot of debt service, obviously associated with projects, our relationship with the Chamber. Yeah, there's a number of expenditures that are in that economic development definition relative to the, to the resolution, the policy resolution the Commission adopted. And I, I would just comment, my, my slides were quick, my information was quick, but you hit it on the nail, nail on the head. Now that half million, 600,000 to operate is what we envisioned continuing. So it'd be 5.5 to 6 million over that 10-year period, which would give them then six to seven million dollars for those incentives and those packages and programs that we had talked about.
And so are you, so I know that some businesses ain't interested in the rectal exam that is city government funding of your thing. And so is, uh, so would, they would be able to avoid that or they would just, yeah?
So, so one of the things we've talked about is maybe, maybe that threshold. So maybe there's a certain dollar amount of that public assistance that would require your concurrence with that. And maybe there's, you know, in the entrepreneurship field, again, our model isn't really set up to help them. And certainly the Chamber has that expertise to be able to do that. So, you know, we've been at this about 23 years under this model, very heavy with government involvement, very time consuming for prospects and, and that people are, are more and more impatient these days for that type of activity. If you look at, Topeka's an example, Go Topeka, they're very aggressive, the way the, the city and the county and the, the Chamber have put that, that together and, and really tried to streamline some of those efforts. So, you know, and even though that 500,000's been talked about for operations, a lot of those operations are tied to specific initiatives that the Chamber obviously would have an annual contract and program of work with you. So it isn't, it isn't all going to, to salaries. So it's, it's going for those specific areas of operation. And I think probably one of the more unique things has been the last, uh, three different types of private programs. So I think one of the things that you could do by providing funding for investment is would encourage that private investment venture to continue, knowing that that public money is there for them to utilize for different packages and, and prospects.
Well, if any, if it would make the process, yeah, faster, smoother, easier, yeah, if we could, you know, give out 40 to 60,000 twenty times instead of 400,000 or 800,000 once, I think our, our chances of hitting a, a double or a triple would be a whole lot better than always trying to land that home run, which doesn't seem to happen very often.
You know, I think you could just imagine if we would have been administering this loan program with, how many was it? 80 companies? We, we would have not have been able to do that in the timeline that they did. So in a government, you know, if all of those applications would have came to the Commission for approval per se. So again, that's the advantage you have of streamlining that and a private sector approach that, that you could establish, establish some of those thresholds that might need your concurrence. And you would still have an annual review at least that, you know, you would have to say, okay, if we want to keep doing this, here's what we need to do.
As long as you have that caveat in there, like every other organization that we give money to, I think that would probably be okay.
Jason?
Yeah. For interrupting, I just, before we go down a bunch of rabbit trails, I want to clarify our position. The Chamber, just so everybody here knows, the Chamber does not have a position on this at all. This was, this has just been internal discussions that has gone on between staff and, and some of the leadership. And so there, there, there potentially could be a lot of our board members hearing this for the first time. So I just want to be very clear that the Chamber has not taken a position on this issue. From a historical standpoint, one of the things that, that I recognized when I came here a year ago, that one of the standing struggles, for lack of a better word, between the Commission and the Chamber was this idea of we have to fence off a certain amount of money in case we get a project. And, and, and over the last year, the Chamber has taken the stance, and I, and I think rightfully so, we cannot continue to have that strict point of view when you all are facing budgetary challenges. Because it's incredibly difficult for you as elected officials to have to choose between cuts and tax increases while there's this large fund sitting over here that potentially could be used to help offset that. And so I think you've recognized over the last 18 months, that you've heard that language, that fence-off language significantly less from the Chamber than you, than you did previously. However, there is a, there is a lot of agitation that for the last 30 years, 25 years, the Chamber leadership and members have been at the forefront of continuing to get the support needed to get this initiative passed. And they would like to create an environment where you don't have that consternation between the two parties. And one of the ways to do that is designate a certain amount, when this is whether this is the county renewal or the cities, designate a certain amount for jobs. And, and it doesn't have to be the full two-thirds, but what amount can we set aside and know that? And that would include taking the, the, the programming element out of it as well. But what can you, what can we count on so that we don't have to continue to, to discuss how, how the, the funds should be used? Because one of the downsides of saying we're not going to have a fence-off language anymore is if MBAF came today, we probably couldn't do that project. And that's because there's not enough funds, as you all know, in, in that ED fund without potentially taking it from somewhere else to do that kind of a project. So that's the downside. Now, as we talked about what some of the options were, we talked about just a designated fund, we've talked about this model where, where a certain amount goes to the Chamber, that is a Go Topeka model. So in Go Topeka, there's a certain amount every year that goes to the Chamber. They use half of it for operations, they use half of it for quote unquote incentives. I can't imagine a scenario, and I've told Ron this, that we would want, that would approve any funds out of those incentive funds without concurrence from the Commission. That's, that's how it is in Topeka. Now, it all, all the negotiations and things go on at the Chamber, but they have to have concurrents, concurrence between the Chamber Board and, well, the Go Topeka Board and, and the governing body. Now Ron brought up, well, what about something like the loan fund, which he brought up tonight? And that's fair enough. You all approved a program, we approved the individual applications and then we, and then we published to receive it. So maybe that's a scenario where that wouldn't happen. But just understand, we, I, we don't have approval from the Chamber for this model. And, and we don't think that, that that's the poster child for what your decision is or not. But we are, we, we do have, our, we, our leadership is committed to working with the Commission on how can we set aside a certain amount for jobs and a certain amount for infrastructure where we don't have to argue all the time about how the funds should be spent? So I think whatever decision or agreement we can come to like that, again, whether it's the city option or the county option, I think that's the scenario we want to get to. And if it's what Jason talked about tonight, that's great. If it's, we're going to set aside a specific fund, that's great. I think we're open to either option. I just didn't want to go too far down the rabbit trail without understanding that this is, this is an unimproved, unapproved idea on our side as well, so.
Thank you, Jason. Other city Commissioner comments and questions? I'm sure they must-
Yeah. Win Butler, I wanted to, you know, as I said earlier, I'm, I'm convinced that this tax, we can't do strategic planning unless we deal with this tax this year. Because that worked the fork in the road. I mean, next year, you know, we'll be sitting there trying to do the budget about the same time. And if we don't have this tax passed, then we're not going to be going forward in Manhattan. We're going to be going backwards. We're going to be talking the same thing. Which pools should we close? Which services should we cut? What roads should we not plow? So the whole strategic plan rests on, you have to have revenues to fund it. And my approach has always been, I, I prefer sales tax than property tax because, you know, that's another way you could go. Just raise the property tax and do it and forget about it. So I'm all for this and I, and I think we should do it this year. Because it, it needs to be in place, not that we'll be able to spend the money next year or even the year after, but we can do the strategic plan. And then we won't have a $3 million, you know, hole in, in, in what we're looking at long-term. Now, when I first got on the Commission, you know, I pushed for, you know, changing the way we did economic development. And that's why we got the split that we have now. That was one of my prime things. And as Jason said from the Chamber, that has caused a little bit of friction over the past 10 years because there's a, you know, you, you can just change what you do with the money every year. But looking at this split that Jason outlined, the, the 2020/60, I don't have a problem with that. Because it dedicates sufficient money to the bond and interest fund, which is going to help every one of our taxpayers and businesses. Because that's what drives the mill levy to a certain extent. So that takes care of that piece. I think, you know, the 60 split gives us a lot for infrastructure, but as Mark said, you can also use that for, you know, any other project that might come up the way it's worded. And, and I think it would make sense to just say, okay, 20% for the Chamber, fine. And, and put it in a silo, which basically says, you know, that, that's what it's committed to. And we can put whatever strings we need there, but there needs to be that confidence that, you know, this is, as Jason said, it's for the jobs piece of it. So, so what we, what we've got here is, you know, debt reduction, jobs, infrastructure. And I think that would work great for the city and it would allow, you know, Jason to actually flesh out his long-range strategic plan for the city for the next 10 years.
Thanks, Win. Linda or Aaron?
You want to go ahead, Linda? I think you're on mute.
Shut up. Okay. So Win, you're, you're proposing a 2020/60 split?
Yeah, that's what Jason had on the slide, right?
I just wanted to be sure. You were talking, I, I just wanted to be sure what-
Yeah, it's 1.3 million is what the 20 is on each of them. And, and his three options, I, I think that one, that one covers all the boxes for everybody, I think. It's a good compromise.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Mayor, I'll go ahead. Oh, sorry.
Why don't you go ahead, Aaron?
Um, so my biggest problem with, and I think we sh- I, I am, I think it makes sense to get this on the ballot this year and to move forward with an education campaign. My biggest problem is the way that Commissioner Butler just described this, or even the questions that Jason answered and Commissioner Hattasal talked about, that the people that will be excited to go vote for that type of proposal are big business people or people that are property owners. And if we're turning out 20,000 people to vote, there's no carrot, there's nothing in there that's going to potentially directly impact them. And we saw this, we saw this fail last time. And I, Commissioner Hattasal and I went door to door and we heard this at the door. We didn't know it was what, what they were getting out of it and it wasn't the education campaign. So my, my suggestion and why I would be for this this year would be to have some component of housing. And I think Katie has to look at that, what type of, we heard economic development earlier, you know, it touches every part of housing. We've had Regent Reimagined talk about live, work and play. Well, there's, the live component is completely missing over and over again. We talk about Aggieville and playing. We talk about the businesses getting, you know, money set aside for them or fenced off, but we don't talk about that living component. And it doesn't have to be, it, it, there's a lot of ways that we can do that. We don't need to hash it out unless you want to about what the housing and how that influences economic development. We don't have to hash it out at this meeting, Commissioner Butler, but we will have to hash it out for the question. I, I guarantee that. But I will not move forward if this does, if this sales tax is subsidizing property tax, but it's not giving the person paying the sales tax that doesn't own property any benefit for voting for it. It's a dead-on arrival and we need to have an incentive for those people to support this initiative if it's going to be on the ballot in this type of environment with pandemic and all the uncertainty around. Can't just ask them to even keep their sales tax or if they think it's a sales tax increase, whatever the messaging may be, can't do it without that. And the, the thing that is on every survey is housing affordability, housing suitability, housing concerns, those, it's, that, that's why it crosses, it cuts across, there's, and it makes, it makes sense. I, I work in, you know, I'm in a position where there's the constant struggle for young people to come into the workforce is housing. It's housing and transportation are some of those struggles. We have an opportunity here, here to, to do that. So I want that to be out there, that I want to see housing to be part of it. I think it can be creatively put in. It doesn't have to be a huge slice. I'd like to see it in the question and not just in the resolution. That's a legal decision. And so there's, as I mentioned earlier in an email right after, it says, in your question, Jason, if you can bring that up. The ballot question that you put in bold, it says right here, you know, paying for outstanding city debt, cost of public infrastructure, paying for economic development initiatives. I'd like to see that say, paying for economic development or workforce housing initiatives to recruit, retain and grow jobs. That, those two things go hand in hand to recruit, retain and grow jobs in our community. I'll stop with that. Thank you, Jason.
Yeah, Aaron, I don't, I don't have a, a problem with that because I saw that as being under public infrastructure because we've supported, you know, housing developments and things like that. Unfortunately, we've done it with a water fund, which, which I objected to many times. And so, you know, this would work or we gave an abatement to, to the guys building out there in Lee Mills and, and this would cover it. But, but I think it, you know, the easy thing to sell is, is, you know, if you own a house, property tax reduction, it, it's going to affect you. If you own a business, property tax reduction's going to affect you. If you're renting, the guy you're renting fund pays property tax. That's going to have an impact on your rent. And then this money could be used for housing initiatives, you know, then we won't have to take it out of the water fund, everything else. That's part of infrastructure. So I don't have a problem with that. It might help with the marketing end of this. But, but clearly anyone out there, you know, that, that owns anything in this town or rents is going to get a massive benefit from this.
Thank you. Linda, do you-
Linda Morse, yes, hi. I'm not excited about a sales tax for this coming fall election. I will go along with it if that's the majority of the Commission's will. And I do like Aaron's suggestion about somehow including workforce housing. I think that has been, it's, what, conspicuously absent from anything that we do. I don't know how much, Aaron, if we're going to leave it undefined. I don't know in what way to use it. We've talked about a housing trust fund, but we haven't defined it. And so it's going to be, it'll be on the ballot and it will be, to be determined. So that's always dangerous too. But I wanted to just say that I think we can work in housing. I think we have to have it. This financial situation that we are in is going to just rip the heart out of our community if we don't take some, some aggressive steps. And I know that when we have a period of, when we're struggling is when we need to reinvest in the community, it seems to me, and not walk away and just let it sit for three years until it gets worse. And so we have to- And so we have to take it in stride and try to do something that matters. Might take just some decisive action. I can go with the 2020/60 model. But I want it to be meaningful. Aaron, you spoke to, you know, this community continues its journey to become more and more rental, year after year. Higher numbers of rentals than residence, than single family or, you know, even duplexes. And so that housing component does make a difference. We've done, we're doing public housing, we're doing tax credits, we're doing fixer upper on some, what, CDVG money a few a year. We've done a couple of buyouts for flood, but that's over because we don't have any money. And so I think we need a little infusion of some kind of initiative to jumpstart and get us started in that, in that regard. This is a way forward and so I would support it.
Yes, Mark.
I just want to add, Hattasall here, I just want to add a couple of things. A, yes, I think we should do it this fall because I think the opposition to it last time has got bigger fish to fry than our sales tax here in Riley County. So I would hope that we wouldn't be such a large organized anti-sales tax campaign this time around. I would be interested in, I'm not interested in some, yeah, bureaucratically heavy inefficient housing thing that the city tries to administer. But I remember when I moved here in 84, it wasn't too long after that, there was some program that the city was doing with the help with down payments or I think back in those days, like a 5% down payment on a house was, was new to the idea. And somehow there was some facilitation to help first time homeowners with the, either the down payment or something. But I think to help solve some of this empty rental stuff, what would be, I think, ideal thing is if we could somehow incentivize first time homeowners to buy a rental property house and make it the home for them. I think that that would solve the deteriorating rental property stock. It would help the first time homeowner get into a house. Not everybody's handy, but I'm surprised by the number of people that are. And so I don't know what kind of programs you had in mind, Aaron, and that's for another night because I'm getting tired. But if, if we could, I would, let's look at the problems we have. Crappy rundown rental property housing and people that don't have a house. And so if we could somehow both solve both of those problems with a cool, nifty program that works, it's not too heavy and too slow, I would be in favor of somehow including that. I'm not in favor of every housing project, program, idea, just because it's something that we could try. But if we could figure out something that's going to work and work well and work quickly and work easily, not there's such a thing, but if we could come up with something that shoots for that, I would be all on board with that, so.
Thank you, Mark. Well, I do have a few comments. I, you know, COVID has really changed everything as far as budgets that we've been discussing. And we did talk about the sales tax as renewing it and replacing it away from the county. And the Riley County Commissioners have had that discussion also. They were going to put it on the ballot and then they again voted not to do that this year. If you look at Kansas State University, I'm pretty sure their enrollment is going to be maybe between 15,000 to 18,000. That's a decrease from anything we've ever experienced. And we, that's being optimistic. K-12, I don't know if they're, how long they're going to be open and when they're going to open and how that hybrid format is going to look. I do know unemployment is up and I do know people are struggling. And I think it, I don't feel, I would feel a little insensitive thinking we can put this on the November ballot for this year. When we are talking about $2 million plus dollars to cut from our own funds for parks and recreation and all the other departments, even furloughing people and maybe that might lead to unemployment. We are not done with COVID-19. We're not going to even hit our peak till October, probably, August, September, October of students coming back. And to me, to even discuss what the 2020/60 looks like, I need to see what Topeka is doing. I don't have any idea except the discussion we're having this night. And that takes longer than a couple of months. I can't do it on a whim and dedicate money to a program I know nothing about. So that's asking a bit much. If we were going to renew it, I would look at replacing this tax for next year. I'm not in a position to make a decision on how to split the money or anything because I just don't have that kind of information. Our focus right now has been on how to reduce our general fund and what to do with our budget. And that's been kind of taking over our lives and we're seeing the impact in our community. And quality of life has been impacted drastically. And that's something we don't want to see happen next year. And that's where my focus is at this point. I completely understand the city commissioners as well as city staff wanting to do it this year. I think that would be great. And in any other year, if all things were equal, I would love to do it this year. But in my opinion, this is not the year for it. I don't feel comfortable asking people to go vote on a sales tax to keep it the same as Park for Manhattan and at the same time tell them we're going to cut $2 million and not have quality of life. So those are just philosophical differences. And I am one commissioner with that, that information. But like I said, I don't know what a Topeka plan looks like. I don't know what other chamber plans looks like. So I'm even on the fence about how to dedicate this money to a chamber or anybody else at this point.
I think the key point is that this wouldn't go into effect till 2023. And that's what we got to explain to the voters. Because I agree with you, you know, it would look crazy if we were going to raise the taxes, sales tax this year while dealing with the cuts, but we're not. This is the recovery plan. That goofy virus better not be around here in 2023. I mean, I think, I think just about everybody will say that, that bad boy's got to be gone by then. And this is our launch point and that's what we got to sell them on. Because, yeah, we're going to have to, we're going to have to deal with the budget problems. But if we don't get this tax in place, we're just going to prolong the agony. And next year is going to be the same and the year after, 2022, the same because we won't know the direction we're going. And that's why, you know, I was, you know, struggling with this, what would be best? But I think we should roll the dice. There's going to be, you know, more people voting. We've got to sell it. If we can't sell it, then I guess we're going to be in a real jam because we're going to be raising property tax.
I don't think, first of all, let's address the property tax piece. This won't, like you said, won't go into effect until 2023. So there's still a few years here to decide, you know, when the property, and property valuations are different than property taxes. So we need to be clear about that as well. When people's property valuations increase, they always put it on us, even if we had nothing to do with it. So we need to be clear about that too. But as far as this one, it's not a one and done, that this is the only chance we have. So I want to be clear about that. I do want to see it. I just don't think this year is the appropriate year.
I'd just like to state also that this is kind of abstraction or a detour from our budget situation for 2020 and even for 2021. And so we still have issues to solve, the same issues we started the evening with. If, whether or not we do this, we have to return to these, to our own, the issues for this year and next year. And that's going to be a whole different conversation. I don't think this sales tax is even enough money to solve all of our problems. I mean, as I, if we're waiting, we've got general fund, temp notes. We just keep putting things over there under temp notes and they come due and we end up with a problem. And, and I am disappointed that we didn't get the sales tax last time. I thought that was a good solution for our future. And the projects that we absolutely needed here with the levy and the airport and some of those, they were big. They were and are. Here we are facing those same projects, the levies coming due and we're struggling to even put together enough money. So anyway, just to discuss this a little further, I think that this decision is not a solution for our current problem.
See, I think it is, as I mentioned earlier, because the problem is the long-term expenditures, this EcoDevo funds, it runs out in 10 years and you're $3 million in the hole. But if you can get this tax passed, then you can take the current EcoDevo money and solve your problems for this year and next year. And then you've got a long-term source for in the future. And so I can't separate the two. They're not two distinct things. It allows you to do strategic planning long-term for the next 10 years. But it also means that you can feel comfortable about taking the EcoDevo monies we have now and plugging some of the holes. Because there will be something that'll backstop it six, seven years from now. Now, that's the long-term thing. When you look at the history and, you know, the staff prepared here where they said, you know, we got, we got $3 million shortfall, but that's in the future. And by putting this tax on there, I'd feel a lot more comfortable doing this year's budget, next year's budget with the hope that we've got a long-term fix on this. Because it'll let us use our current funds for a short-term fix. And then this tax being sold will give us a long-term fix and move the city forward, not backwards.
I'm not sure there's an appetite to pass this tax. I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure the community is ready for that.
Jay, can I, I have a question for Jason. I was looking real quick, the difference between what we collect now within the city and what we would collect with the inclusion of the Potawatomi portion of the city. What's that difference?
Three and a half million.
So three and a half million. And that essentially is, it was a policy decision to go ahead with Riley County a decade ago and maybe even before that, a decade before that almost. I'm not sure if I, the original was a county tax. So this is, this makes a lot of sense that we, if we're going to try to do economic development in the city, it includes the entire city. So that's cleaning up policy. In my opinion, there's nothing wrong with doing that now, making that the case and explaining to people that their sales tax at Walmart is actually going to be coming back into the city in some way. That makes, that makes some sense for the economic development side of things. The argument that, you know, this, this does give breathing room. It gives strategic planning room. All of those are valid arguments. The, but also just on a pure policy side, if we're going to be promoting economic development with the chamber for the city of Manhattan and things, it should include the entire city of Manhattan. We, we got kind of pigeonholed into this with the county. We played ball with the county at the beginning of this, pre-COVID. This isn't a COVID decision necessarily. We tried to play ball with the county and I think they've decided to do their own thing and they're not necessarily listening very well or wanting to be part of this discussion at this point. I'm not sure, it seems that way. But we need to move forward, in my opinion, to get the lines right, to get this, the fund right. So it is economic development and it includes the, the housing things. And what Commissioner Hattasall talked about, I think is exactly what I was thinking as well as far as being creative and finding ways to help people into homeownership and addressing the strengths of the community. So the fact, if this was just a response to COVID, that would, the mayor's comments would be more, I guess, heavy on me. But since we started this discussion before and it really doesn't, the trick here is going to be educating the public. And I think if we give them something to vote for, they'll vote for something. That's the universal message that we heard at the doors. They didn't, they didn't feel like they were getting anything out of this and they weren't sure what it was last time. Give them something to vote for, explain what it is and they'll, I'm confident there is that appetite.
Let this point out, I'll go ahead, Mark.
I just want to say, is there any way, Jason or Ron, that there's somebody could do a survey, a quick, quiet survey of the community, a polling of sorts, not that everybody else isn't already doing it this time of year. But to find out kind of what the, what the flavor of or feel of the people is toward a sales tax thing. I don't know, in the past, I think that's been done quietly by the chamber, maybe. I don't know what, how that works.
So typically, that's not something that we can do as a government. But as you mentioned in the past, there's been a private sector approach that has supported the effort to be able to do that. We could certainly visit with them or anybody about that opportunity. Again, we have to be, our role and our campaign has to be one that educates folks. So that typically doesn't fall in our, our function.
And I suppose we're running out of time to do much of that also, if we have a September 1st deadline.
Not necessarily. I think we do have, you know, with, with the question, do September 1st? I think it's going to be important to, what are those key attributes that are going to make this program viable? And again, I'm not, I'm not sure we have to, I mean, we have to have a good message and a good idea of what we're going to spend the money on. People are going to want to know that. Whether or not we actually have to have that, I think one could actually argue that that policy resolution is part of developing the strategic plan and the recovery plan. Where before, we've tried hard to have that resolution in place before we go to the ballot. Because it's been made up of what this commission wants that policy to be. But I think you could say, you know, here's some areas we're going to identify as priorities if this passes and then we're going to develop the framework for implementing that.
I actually agree with Mark that a survey is important. And it should have been something we have done earlier so that we have a good, pretty good, clear direction. But I think if we have time to do it, it's what we ought to do and we ought to add. If the chamber is the right vehicle to do it. Because after we pass this resolution or for the ballot, we are not able to campaign for or against, right? Or just can't campaign for it. We can't advocate for it.
You can't advocate one way or the other.
Just educate.
It's an educational process.
Either way, okay.
What is, what's it about?
Jason?
I just, I know we had some discussion about the point three. And just, just a perspective I would offer you. If the point three would have passed and the sales tax rate would have went to 9.25 and we would have renewed with the county and basically that point five renewal, we would have been paying 9.25 as City of Manhattan taxpayers in Riley County and we would have realized $6 million. This city half cent replacement will generate $6.5 million annually and it'll keep your sales tax rate the same. And the point that I want to make here is this rate has been paying for Manhattan's EcoDevo approach for the last 20 years. But it's also been paying for a significant portion of what's occurring in rural Riley County. And when we ask our voters to raise it by point three, our question was begged because it had to be, because it was for general purposes. And it was difficult to understand what we were doing. And if you didn't sit through an hour presentation from our staff, it was hard to know. I mean, you had to do some research, you had to get on a website, you had to read a lot. You had to understand what you were voting for. This point five is about Manhattan's future. And being the engine of this region, that $6.5 million at the same rate you're paying in Riley County is significant. And to the voter who wants to realize the most for their buck, this is the opportunity for us to capitalize for the next 12 years.
Thank you, Jason. I just want to be clear about a couple of things. I think there's a lot of confusion going on just amongst us right now. Last year's sales tax. Last year's sales tax was a different sales tax to increase the sales tax. And that was for other projects. The sales tax we are talking now has nothing to do with last year's sales tax. This sales tax is already there. It expires in 2023, so we have a couple of years, sorry, 2022?
At the end of 2022.
At the end of 2022. So we have this year and next year to put it on the ballot. So it's not like it goes into effect this year if it passes and we start collecting next year. This is the same sales tax where we are going to replace it with just Manhattan only. So this isn't anything different than what we currently have, except it's being split. And this is the discussion that we're not having, like you said, because of COVID-19, we've been having it for a couple of years now on how to do this. But there, this isn't a one and done, like this is the only chance we have, we can vote and we're losing out. We're not going to be able to collect anything until 2023 anyway. So we have this year and next year as well to figure out how you want to do this. I am still not for it for this year. I, like I said, this is not the time for it. If other commissioners are for it, I'm sure staff will work out something. This is July. And typically, these things take a little bit longer to have this discussion. I am concerned about the split. I am not in agreement with the 2020-60. I don't have any information, like I said before. The language of that, of the ballot is going to make a difference in how you speak to it. But this isn't, like I said, a one and done and we're done, we don't ever get a chance at this again. But we do need to make sure the people that you are going to go out and get to vote on this understand completely what it is. And that is going to take some time. And it is COVID-19. We're in pandemic. So I'm not over it yet because it's not over yet. We haven't peaked yet. So let's not pretend that's not happening.
Can we be sure the staff's got the right guidance? I guess everybody's got to definitively explain, should they continue with this? And of course, I'm in favor of it, you know, to put it on the November ballot. Because, you know, if, if, if the majority of the commission's against it, then they're wasting their time. So we need to all just state our position clearly, either yes, go for it in November or not, I'm ready to go for it in November.
I am not for November, not this November.
I am, oh, go ahead.
I am for.
I am with the housing language.
Is that a yes?
No, we got to see the housing language and then it's a yes.
I'm not voting, but I am supportive of the ballot initiative for the November election and with the housing reference and component. I think that the staff will come back to us at the next step with other questions, however, which is, do you want to cancel the one we've got now in favor of the new one? Is that something you're going to ask or are we tied to the one with the county until it expires? Okay, gotcha. And what else? Some other things you've asked in the past. So, okay, just wanted to think about all of them tonight if we could.
Well, there's lots of questions. Once this comes back next, I have a bajillion questions because this was just for me, whether we're going to move forward or not. Otherwise, yes, there's a, I have a million questions.
Well, and then we have to get on with our 2021 budget that we're kind of sidelining for the evening. I mean, you know, we're distracted, okay.
I do want to say this, this narrative of how somehow we held back economic development in Manhattan is not true. I think the processes and the, the structure that we had in place for the EcoDevo funds worked well because as city commissioners, we rotate in and out, that there was a little bit of flexibility and control for that time and moment on how to use some of that money. And I, I feel we would have, we were on board with MBA, we were on board with all of the projects that were brought to us. We had great discussion and that's the kind of discussion this community needs to see because these are public funds. And, and public officials and city staff need to be part of that process. So that's one of the things we need to continue to discuss if, if and when this process starts to move along. I think what we did with EcoDevo funds, I, I'm proud of the things we did with it. Some of them worked, some of them didn't. But yeah, I think it worked well for us. Is there any, any more discussion?
No, we appreciate the feedback. We know it's a, a tough issue at a tough time and, and certainly we've got some other challenges ahead of us, but that gives us some ability to work towards some options and, and help further develop the concept and hopefully create an opportunity for you to provide a lot of questions and hopefully we'll be able to develop some answers. So appreciate the feedback.
Thank you. Is that it for the agenda this evening, Ron?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you all. See you next Tuesday.